Good evening, I'd like to follow this meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commissioners' Order for Thursday, July 28, 2016. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Nah?
Here.
Commissioner Ozar?
Present.
Commissioner Sykes?
Here.
Commissioner Urban?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooney?
Present.
Mayor Opa?
Present.
Welcome, everyone. Something must be going on. Glad to see you all here. And we're going to try to get through this wonderful meeting as quickly as possible and allow for some significant dialogue around opportunities as we move our city forward. So with that, first, are there any communications, Mr. Anderson?
None, Your Honor.
All right, we are on Item C, Discussion Topics. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. This is a great time for Kalamazoo as we talk about the Kalamazoo's future revenue options available. And what I want to do is just look at what we're looking at for outcomes for tonight. We're going to review the work that's been done already based on our last work session, February 29, and predominantly present information on the income tax and another option that's been developed since we last met, and then determine next steps from here. So we will launch into where we've been. And what I want to do is kind of reset things for us and just ground us into what ultimately I began here as a city manager when we set priorities for moving this community forward. There were three priorities that were really key to the work that's been done the last two and a half years and, as you'll see tonight, the work that will take off from here. And the first priority is create long-term stability for the city. So we tackled legacy costs the first year, getting those in check and a funded stream that can stabilize and help stabilize our budget. The other option that, or the priority that we looked at was creating a community-shared vision. And we're going to talk about that tonight in Imagine Kalamazoo. You see the nice shirt I'm wearing tonight? I walked by the bus garage and they thought I was a mechanic, so I... But we're trying to get the word out that, hey, we're trying to create this new community vision and we can certainly move this work forward tonight based on what's going to be presented. And then shared prosperity, a commission priority, but a real priority for all of us, that we've got to move this community forward for everyone and tackle the difficult problems with poverty and creating a shared prosperity for everyone. So what we're trying to do is get this all tied together here tonight and how we're going to address this in what's being presented. So just to look at the actual deficits, projected deficits. This is new information or based on some of the options that we're already implementing and updated numbers for the 2017 resolve. The point here is, even with those new information, we're still faced with structural deficit in the city. And these problems are real and we need to address them as we move forward. So the revenue panels work, and I want to acknowledge and thank the revenue panel. I think most of the revenue panels here tonight, but for a couple, so it's great to see you all. Thank you for the work that was done. Actually, a year ago, we would have been in this room at this time working on the revenue. So I want to acknowledge those folks in the audience that gave up their time, that really helped give us some options that we can work on. And as a review of the options that we decided at the last meeting what we wanted to work on, countywide emergency dispatch authority. So the authority has authorized or asked the county commission, Board of Commissioners, to place on the ballot next May a ballot proposal for a surcharge, a countywide surcharge to fund consolidated dispatch. So that will be taken up by the county and with the hope that it will be passed at that time. And the go-live date for consolidated dispatch would be first quarter of 2018. And that is factored into the information that's going to be presented tonight. And then development infill. This is an exciting time for Kalamazoo. There's a lot of projects in the works, in the pipeline. And with that, we do expect some growth in tax revenue, but is it enough to keep pace with the cost of running an urban core community? That's the challenge. And you can see by the thumbs up that while it's some, it doesn't provide enough revenue to get us to where we need to be. And then I'm going to explain more about the income tax tonight. I think that's one of the things we were asked to do is look at this and how it would work here in Kalamazoo if we were to implement that, some of the variables we need to consider and decide to move that forward. So as far as income tax goes, if pursued by the commission, the timeline would be as such. Now, there is a very tight timeline to get something on the November ballot. That would mean putting something on the commission, before the commission, August 1st, next Monday, to move this work forward in ordinance, if you will, and adopt it. And then that could become the ballot proposal for November. But if that's not, if that's impractical, which in all reality it is, the next logical time would be May of 2017. So this is the timeline for that to occur. And by February 6 of 2017, the commission would have to have the vote in place to put it on the ballot. And then the public would vote on it, May 2, 2017. And then the collections, if approved, the collections would begin January 1 of 2018. And our full first year of full revenue would be the end of 2018. So with that timeline, we're talking about a two-year timeframe for the actual income tax revenue to be realized by the city. So where would the money come from and where would it go? So estimated income tax revenue would be about 16.2 million if levied and if approved by the voters. And so based on what the city charter requires, there would have to be a rollback of the property tax mileage to at least 14 mils. And for that, to offset that revenue, that revenue loss from those property tax rollback, about 7.9 million would have to go towards that, leaving about 8.3 million of new funds available for the general fund. And as the charter reads, anything in excess of what the property tax in overall brought in would have to go towards capital or to pay off street debt. So in this case, at the 14 mil level, there would be about $4.3 million of new revenue to make that happen. We could go down to 12 mils or 10 mils. So at 10 mils, more would need to be put towards offsetting the property tax rollback, about 13.9 million. And in this case, the general fund would be made whole to a certain extent, but there would be no money available for new capital or new projects. So and then 12 mils, you can see the numbers there. So the point is that, you know, this is, income tax would be a game changer. Don't get me wrong, in this community, it's something that would bring in new revenue. And that new revenue would come from non-residents and from our own residents. And so I'm going to show you what the impact would be for residents in this next chart. So what we have here, and this is all based on a 12 mil rollback and a $600 personal exemption rate. So I want to step back a little bit and cover the income tax. There's really three areas that the commission would have to decide, three variables that the commission would have to decide. One would be the tax rate itself. You can levy up to 1% on residents and 1/2% on non-residents or anything less than that. But always the non-resident rate has to be half of the resident rate under state law. So in this case, we're assuming a full 1% levy of income tax and a $600 personal exemption rate. That's another variable that would need to be decided, again, under an income tax. And some communities have up to $2, $3, $2,500 personal exemption. There's 22 communities that levy an income tax in the city, or in the state. And so 600 tends to be about the average or the frequent level for personal exemption. And the third variable is there's an ability to set a threshold or a floor of income that anything below that floor is exempt from an income tax. So that could be the poverty level in this community. And then, but this is assuming a $600 personal exemption and a 1% tax rate. So for instance, a low-income homeowner would realize a net property or a net tax increase of $124 with an income tax, all the way up to a high-income homeowner of $255. A low-income renter, because they don't own a home, wouldn't realize the benefit of a property tax rollback, but they would be subject to an income tax and thus they would be realizing about $182 increase in their tax burden. So this is all net of the property tax, so this would represent an increase in taxes for the residents. But again, there would be a non-resident component that would be brought in as well. So what I want to do is pause here and see if there's any questions around this income tax.
Yeah, Commissioner Ozar?
Does this figures on the new income, does that take into account anticipated revenue for the consolidated dispatch, or is this just a standalone?
This is a standalone foreign income tax. Now, the chart that showed the projected deficits, that would assume a consolidated dispatch going into effect. That would be about a $2 million savings a year to the general fund.
So if we were to combine this chart with the consolidated dispatch?
Right.
You could essentially add $2 million to all these figures of that?
Right, right. You could add the thumbs up, too. That would get you, you know, seven thumbs up total, because the income tax has five, so.
Mr. Sykes?
So just to be clear, if we were to set a higher rate of exemption, I'm assuming these figures for the low-income renters and the low-income homeowners would go down?
Right. What the tax burden would be would go down, but also the overall revenue would go down to the city, too.
Right, right. And same goes for if we reset a floor?
Correct. Yep.
Mr. Turner, can you talk about those exemptions and floors a little bit?
Sure.
I mean, yeah.
What is coming around to you is a survey that was done by office. There are 22 cities in Michigan that impose a income tax. There are, the personal exemption amount, the mean is about $750, $760. The median is 600. Over half of, and that's the lowest you can do, the minimum is 600. The maximum is whatever the personal exemption is under the federal income tax law, which is from 2015 was $3,000. You can see by that first column that, like I said, most of them are 600. There are a few communities that are above that. Obviously, there's outliers over Grayling and Hudson and Portland, they're over 1,000. But as you can see out of the 22, 19 of them are $1,000 or less. In addition to the personal exemption for an individual, there are also additional exemptions that may be granted under the statute. That is for people who are 65 years or older, if they're blind, if they're paraplegic, if they're permanently disabled under social security law, if they're deaf. And so there is additional exemptions for those folks who need it. Again, those are options, so you don't have to permit that, as you can see, not all communities do that. Most of them give the, I think, all but one give the 65 or older, the other ones are mixed. For the most part, most of these exemptions are granted in other communities. The other thing that was suggested by the city manager is if your adjusted gross income is less than a certain amount, you don't have to pay any taxes. That is an option under the statute, but no community does that. So we don't have any, if you will, data that would help us along those lines. However, in columns three and columns four are either/or. You don't have to do either one, but if you do one, you can't do the other. And the number four is if you're an exemption claimed by another taxpayer. That is one where, the easiest way to explain that probably is if you have a dependent who has enough money and they're, they would normally have to pay tax under the federal statute, they can't claim themselves as a dependent because you're claiming them. But for purposes of the city income tax, they may claim themselves. But probably the best two examples are if you have an elderly parent and you are caring for the parent and you claim them as a dependent, but they have a little income on the side, they would be able to claim under the city income tax an exemption, but they couldn't claim under the federal. The other example is obviously students. And that one, I can use that one, or I did use it in fact, because my son was going to school in Big Rapids and he had a job. And so I was, he was able to claim in Big Rapids, I believe that's correct. Yes, he was able to, well, I think he was, he claimed himself because he was, and college towns are different. Now, the other thing I wanted to remind you of, but because I could claim him as a dependent, he could also claim himself, not for that purpose of that income tax. The other thing is for college students. Most, some of these communities don't all have colleges, but obviously Big Rapids does. Lansing has a lot of college students. The way that works is under their, the regulations that the city income tax administrators have adopted statewide, is that if you claim your residency as your home, for instance, my son claimed Kalamazoo as his home, he was considered a non-resident in Big Rapids even though he spent most of the year there going to school. And so he only had to pay 1/2%. If he had registered to vote in Big Rapids, that is an indication of residency and he would have had to pay 1%. So that's, and that's the way most communities work that. That's true in, like I said, Big Rapids. I think Grand Rapids may do the same thing. If you register to vote in that city, you now become a resident, you have to pay 1% on that, on your income in that community. So those are the options that you have before you. And if you have any questions, otherwise I think it's kind of self-explanatory.
Commissioner Ozar?
For the AGI exemption, is that just based on AGI? Is there any factor for family size in there, like area median?
No, it's an AGI. That's the way the statute is. So you set the level, whatever their gross adjusted income, and oftentimes when you do file, you have to staple the first page of your federal return to it. So there's, the local can say, okay, you're taking your AGI from the last line on the first page of your federal return, and now do you fall under the level? So I think those folks would still have to file a local income tax return, they just wouldn't have to pay anything because they can demonstrate they fall under the ceiling or the floor.
Mr. Ozar?
For the, what you just described with college students, is it just registering to vote, or would it be also getting a license when you're showing that that's your address?
Generally, if you register, when you change your address with the Secretary of State, that automatically changes your residence with the local clerk.
Okay.
Any questions, Mr. Anderson?
I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr.?
I did have one. It was sort of back on that chart of your revenue. Did that include the administrative costs? The added administrative costs?
No, no, that, there are options for that. The state could administer it for, or it would have to be netted out. I don't believe administrative costs were factored in there or where they're taught. Administrative costs for implementing the income tax, administering it, are those net of that?
Those administrative costs are baked into the projection.
Okay, so that would be included in those numbers. Yeah, I understand correctly. We did, and this was work that was done through the revenue panel, as part of the revenue panel, we have created an online calculator that we will release next week as part of all of this work that we're bringing forward here tonight. And so folks can take a look at how they would be impacted at various levels of income tax and income and home value and the likes, just to get a sense of what the tax burden would be. So we'll launch that next week.
Mr. Sykes?
And will that be set at a specific mileage rate, exemption rate, or is that something that can be sort of played around with?
It can be played around with. Yeah, those are the variables that need to be set.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions, Mr. Anderson?
All right. So what I want to do next is kind of reset again what we're looking at. And what we're doing here is looking at how we answered questions in the past, the old way of thinking. And it really centers around scarcity. And, you know, what are we going to not do this year? What program are we going to eliminate? What can't we do? You know, what costs are we going to, you know, that's all been the thinking of the last 10 years because that's been the reality we've faced is with the Great Recession and the economy, turn in the economy. So, you know, this is all related to how we thought about the budget in the past and up to the present. And, you know, the other, the flip side of that is revenue. How are we going to get new revenue to help move this community forward? And obviously, we're talking about that tonight, or some combination thereof. But I want to really flip that a little bit and look at a different, a different question, one that asks, imagine if. And for that, we're looking at, imagine if we had a community that created a vision and that vision, imagine if that vision could be realized through a new model of how we resource this community. And imagine if that model would also lead to a lower tax rate for our individuals without an additional tax. And imagine if all that we imagined could be realized. And so what we're doing here tonight is laying out before you what has been imagined and talked about in a new model that we're looking at. And so that vision is going to, this all is going to be grounded in Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. We've reached out to the community and have engaged residents in ways we haven't before. Our staff are doing incredible work in that regard, but there's more work to be done. We need to diversify who we reach and hear the voices that up till now haven't been heard in how we do this work. So we want to cast that net even further while we're working on this Imagine Kalamazoo to bring back early next year this community vision for everyone and how, then the work is decided how we move that forward. And what this new model we're going to be presenting is just a way to resource and realize that vision for everyone. So I want to lay out for you the new model. We're calling it the Foundation for Excellence. And this has been worked on since the revenue panel work. And so what happened is the work of the revenue panel got us so far. And obviously, the income tax was a part of that. And we know that that was going to be difficult to pass and there would be opposition, especially from the business community. So what we did is the mayor and I set up meetings and met with some key donors in the community, philanthropists, and asked the question, what if we had some other model to drive this work forward that doesn't rely on taxing our residents more, that are already paying the highest tax rate in this area, if not the state? And how do we, how could we get there? And so that, those discussions have led to what we're presenting tonight. And so we're really excited about this. It's an incredible opportunity for this community, and so we want to lay it out for you now. So what will the Foundation of Excellence do? This new option will stabilize the budget and take care of that instability in the budget that I talked about, the structural gap, if you will. Reduce property taxes, and we're suggesting going from 19.27 mils down to 12 mils beginning next year and keeping it there for the next three years. And ideally, long-term, going, the goal would be to get it down to 10 mils and leave it there. And provide new funding for aspirational projects, and I'll get into what that means in a little bit. And then the idea of this is this is going to last for generations. This isn't just a, you know, a three-year plan or a five-year plan. This plan is meant to be for the future. So I want to lay this option out before you and for discussion. Some of the guiding principles that we've built around this is this model needs to be built on trust and a legacy of philanthropy. Everyone can be a philanthropist in this community and give back. And this is a way for investment in the community vision to be achieved. And again, that is going to be achieved through Imagine Kalamazoo and the work being done there. Provide tax relief for residents and businesses. Again, make us competitive with the region and in our neighbors. And create a shared prosperity and end generational poverty. And I just want to take a time to pause there because that is huge. And that's something that was put forth by the donors, not the city. And we laid some things out there, but this is the thinking that's out there and the incredible opportunity that exists for us to work in this community in ways that we haven't been able to and bring some of the best thinking into this work and move it forward. And invest in our youth, again, something that has been pointed out and valued by the work that we're presenting here. So those are some of the guiding principles. And this is also a model that's going to be built on equity. And again, creating equity throughout the community. So one of the things I've said, and this goes back to the priorities, and I mentioned the first four priorities were administrative priorities, that's how it was set up. The fifth one was a commission priority of ending poverty, especially among children. But what I've come to realize is if we could hit all those other four priorities right on, but it would be, don't address that fifth one, it's going to tear our community apart. And it is. So we need to address that. So three key actions are going to be part of this, stabilizing the budget, making Kalamazoo competitive, and investing in the community. So stabilizing the budget, we're looking at a new funding source, and this is meant to diversify our revenue. We're still going to have property tax, we're still going to have fees, people are still going to be paying for the services they enjoy in Kalamazoo. But what we're doing is we're kind of weaning ourselves off the dependence of those and being at the whim of them each year based on how the economy's going, what's happening at the state and in our own community. So it stops the reliance on what's been talked about as a broken municipal finance model in the state. Next, we're going to, I'm just going to demonstrate in the chart, the next chart, what this looks like in terms of, and I apologize, this is a little hard to see, but the far left column is status quo. And that's what our revenues picture looks like right now. You can see it's dominated by property tax revenue. And then we've got state shared revenue and then other revenue fees and so, and the like. The middle column is what an income tax would bring to the diversification. And you can see that that is, it does diversify. It drops the reliance on the property tax down to about $20 million. And it gives us, based on the 14 mil level, about 16.3 million of new revenue. But it's important to note that of that 4.2 million would be, have to go to capital. It couldn't be used for some of these other programmatic aspirational things I just talked about. But on the far right, we've got the Foundation for Excellence. And that does also diversify to the same extent as an income tax, but it's much more flexible in how the dollars will be used. And the key here is that both the income tax and the Foundation of Excellence grow the pie, the overall pie, from status quo. It just is more, with the Foundation of Excellence, it gives us more flexibility. Next key action is making Kalamazoo competitive for businesses and residents. So what we're proposing and what's been committed to if we move forward is being able to lower the property tax paid by our residents, by more than, city property tax by more than 1/3 beginning next year. Again, from 19.27 down to 12 mils. And then by doing that, that's going to create a strong Kalamazoo that can then become a catalyst for this region and drive some regional collaboration and start, we can start looking at shared service delivery. That becomes a real option when, right now, everyone looks to Kalamazoo like we've got all these costs, you know, we're broke, if you will, and why would we want to partner with Kalamazoo just to take on those burdens that the city has? So this would release us from that. Also, it would avoid another tax on our citizens. So rather than taxing more, this would actually reduce the overall net tax burden on our residents. This would also invest in issues and opportunities that arise from Imagine Kalamazoo. Talked about youth, talked about ending generational poverty. Talked about youth, talked about ending generational poverty, creating a vibrant sense of space, and improvements that benefit everyone. And so I can't emphasize enough the first two and the opportunities that will present themselves in the resources. So there's great work already being done by the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo, by our, by our Parks and Rec Department and other partners in the community. This will just provide more resources to bring the best thinking out there towards these issues and towards use, a focus on youth and, and become a community of excellence. That's what we're talking about here for everyone. Creating a vibrant sense of space. There's going to be a lot of things that need to be done to, to, we're already there for downtown to a certain level. There's more to be done. What this does is provide resources to, to move us to the next level. And then improvements that benefit everyone. And this is that equality piece I want to emphasize, that we've got to look at this for everyone in the community. And, you know, sure, it's great to have a new feature downtown, but we've got to make sure that everyone in the community can enjoy what we're, we're proposing or can benefit from it. And, and that's going to be important work. And, and the idea here is to bring best practices from around the globe, if you will, to, to Kalamazoo to improve on and to, to build on. And someday, we would love to be the best practice out there. We can be the best practice. So, so that's what we're, we're talking about here. So ideas for infrastructure, you know, that's, that's a big piece. We, we are woefully underfunded in infrastructure. Lead remediation, that's been a big topic of conversation since the Flint crisis. Well, we need to look at lead remediation throughout the community. As we learned last winter, that program was eliminated. Well, we're, we need to look at reinstating that to help protect our citizens from, from this, from that crisis occurring here in, in Kalamazoo. So that's the kind of things we're talking about here. Just wanted to give you a, a sense of that. The next are key elements that this is based on. So anyone can be a donor into this foundation. The Foundation of Excellence will be created for, there'll be separation. That's going to be key. I think some concerns would be how much control will there be over the city if this were, were implemented? And it was clear that there will be no control. There will be separation from the, from the city and the donors, and the city will drive success. It will be built upon an independent governance that our charter has set up, and the use of the funds will be directed by the City Commission. And that's, that's built into this and where that commitment is. So there'll be a clear purpose for the fund. So equally, there'll be a clear purpose for how those funds will be used. And I'll show you a conceptual piece of how that could happen in, in the next slide. And then projects will be driven again by Imagine Kalamazoo 25, 2025, our community vision. So I, I want to show you the, the, so I mentioned best practices. Metrics is going to be important here. So this, this is not, you know, just give the city more money and hopefully things will happen. No, there has to be a feedback loop for accountability. We have to be able to demonstrate results in this. And that's going to be built into all this, this work that we have. And lastly, if this doesn't materialize or if the objectives aren't met, there's, the income tax ballot proposal is still out there and would remain an option as a last resort. That's also been part of this discussion in, in what we, what we brought forward. So I want to break this out into phases because there's, there's two key pieces to this. There's a three-year, $70 million commitment for this work. And where that is, how that breaks out is first into stabilizing the budget. And for the, over the three-year period, funds would be available to stabilize the budget, reduce the tax rate down to 12 mils. That's about 10.9 million a year to do that. And then aspirational investments of 10 million a year. So the total commitment over the next three years would be 70.3 million dollars. So what that does is it buys time. It stabilizes us and allows time for Imagine Kalamazoo to be completed, that community vision cast, and then investment will follow in that, towards that vision and achieving it. And so the next phase would be a fully endowed fund for future generations with the goal of it being fully endowed by the end of the third year, by the end of 2020. And this would provide a guaranteed amount to the city off the interest, if you will, of, of that fund and in perpetuity and for generations to come to continue this work in these areas that have been identified. So this is the conceptual framework. And, and this one is very hard to read, but I just, I thought it's important to, to, to put this out there because this is what's been some of the thinking around this is we've got the Foundation for Excellence on top, funded through the community vision, and then we've got capital investment on the far left, 21st century infrastructure, maintenance, the idea that leverage capital, there's a return on capital, regional collaboration, organization of excellence. We need a strong city to make this all happen and talent, retaining and keeping talent. And then the outcomes, becoming a community of excellence that's self-sufficient, quality of life focused. And you can see the, the key outcomes, including youth development, ending generational poverty, elevating neighborhoods, attracting talent, regional prosperity, debt-free over time, decreased tax burden. So all these things are possible under this, under this scenario or under this model. So I'm going to summarize it in the next slide, just to play this out for the three options. So the Revenue Panel recommendations would get us so far towards a balanced budget. The, the recommended options, based on what we've talked about at the February 29th meeting, dispatch and development infill would get us close, but not quite to a balanced budget. Income tax at a 14 mil rollback would get us to a balanced budget and provide money for capital projects. Whereas the Foundation for Excellence would give us a balanced budget, provide the capital, but also go beyond that to aspirational projects. And that would be informed again by Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. So next steps, this presumes, assumes or asks, I'm asking tonight the commission for some direction here on how to proceed. If we wanted to, to go forward with pursuing this model of, of Foundation for Excellence, we would need to continue working with the potential donors. There's a lot of legal pieces to this to create the foundation. That's all being researched by our city attorney. Ultimately, a memorandum of understanding would be, would be prepared and brought to the commission, and that would become the basis for, for agreeing to this and on both sides, memorializing what, what I've laid out tonight. And, and we're ready to go. The work's ready, or the, the model's ready to be implemented in 2017. And, and that's, that's been laid out before us. So with that, I have put a lot out there, but I just wanted you to, to see what new thinking has been put into this revenue situation and, and like, open it up for, back to the mayor for discussion.
Could you answer your questions, Mr. Fisher?
No, I, certainly, I could refer this guy into this. Well, what, what, I think of all the needs and comments you've had and how much difference the 21st century is about the 20th century. I'm thinking, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could combine both the income tax option and the Foundation for Excellence? Basically, $70 million is essentially on the table from the philanthropists. If we added to that an income tax so that we could lower the property taxes down to 10 mils, for example, increase the exemption to the point where it doesn't really, it holds harmless the working to work just by talent, and we have enough extra money to really do the kinds of things that need to, to make our city appealing to the 21st century demographics, which are people who are older, a lot of people who are much older because it's an 80 population. And a younger population that can't afford cars, who are, who'd like to stay in Kalamazoo if they could just find a job. And then they could get to work without having to get a turnover by walking or, or playing. So before we just consider one option or the other, I would, I would love for us to at least explore, if it's possible, to, to make a picture of these two. The deal of that, is it takes away the, the implied threat of, of an income tax coming in three years, it comes right now. It also takes away the implied promise of somehow we won't have an income tax in a few years. It creates a, a, a level of cooperation between the business community, the philanthropic community and the city. As long as it seems like it's either or thing, I have the feeling that somehow the philanthropic option was proposed because there was the threat of an income tax. And so to the extent that we're, we're operating under, operating under a threat, that doesn't seem to be very healthy. So I need to firstly kind of get free of maintaining a threat or somehow, or kicking the can down the road and say, well, let the next commission decide whether it's right to have an income tax. So I don't think I'd better talk any longer. I just wanted you to pull out the option of can, find a subcombination of those.
Thank you. I started. Mr. James.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, I would just like to pause for a minute, actually, before we start kind of dinking around with some few details. And I would like to recognize that this is, I mean, this is unbelievable opportunity. I mean, let's think about it for a minute. I know I'm, I'm wrong. Yeah, okay. I got it. That's a failure. Okay. So, so that said, take a moment quietly, please, without using your hands, to recognize the fact that I, for one, you know, and some of us longer than that, have been sitting on this commission for over a decade, and we have been experiencing basically a policy that frankly started in the 60s with the New Constitution and the state of Michigan. And that policy that was created there was intentionally to limit the opportunities for revenue that cities have. And right codifying that constitution were things that were recognized like, cities can't do sales tax, no pilot opportunities for cities, on and on and on. And we went on as people in Michigan here in 1978, and we passed the Hadley Amendment, which capped the source of revenue for cities from property taxes. And in 1994, we passed Proposal A, capping property taxes all the more. And what has happened is that Michigan is at the top of the list in the entire country in doing what the national policy seems to be, which has been strangling our urban centers. You know, by accident, by intent, you decide, that's how it's worked out. So we have had urban centers who have been struggling, and Kalamazoo falls in that category, for years and years and years, having a population whose general poverty level has been increasing over time, deeply in need, in all fairness, most certainly should get services equal to anybody living in the country, and we are not able to provide that in Kalamazoo. People live with streets that don't get fixed, sidewalks that don't get repaired, public safety officer, neighborhood lays down programs that are cut to the bone. And we sit around here and we set goals as a city commission, as elected representatives, recognizing what people desire here and hoping for that. And we basically say to our administrative staff, that's how it works here, here's your goals, go forth and do good. And one of the goals we've had for a long time has been around in this kind of goals binder we've had and we keep looking back at, we say to our city manager, just what are we asking for here? Create long-term sustainability. And, I mean, that is really kind of the fog of pretending, to tell you the truth, when you look at, at expenses that go up and revenues that go down, and we're kind of asking for miracles. But what has been our response to that? Our response for years and years and years and years, and that's even letting it over into our Imagine Kalamazoo, is what are we willing to cut next? What's going to hurt us the least in the next round of cuts? And so we've sat up here and budgeted in and budgeted out, decided, okay, well, we're going to pave some more streets. Or we don't have the money, so we're going to borrow money every year to fix the little, the streets that we can't fix. And we have people coming to us from neighborhoods that say, are you ever going to fix the sidewalks and fill my house? Well, guess what? We've had like zero budget for fixing sidewalks. On the other hand, we dream when we talk about being a walkable community. So, I mean, it's a trippable community in many ways. So the model has been this, a model of scarcity and a model of cutting. And just in the last few years, and we've gone from, and I know the time that Commissioner Cooney has been on this commission, city hasn't gotten any smaller. 925?
916 to 632.
916 to 632 employees at the city of Kalamazoo. We're asking two-thirds of the employees to do the work that 900 used to do, as few as, what, 15 years ago? That's not that long. And just the time I've been on, I mean, we've tried to get rid of, our, once again, our most expensive cost staffing here, reducing services, reducing critical, critical programs, which include programs that are, you know, we ask public safety to run at their complete bare-bones staffing patterns. We, we've cut our NLO program out, tried to incorporate that to the work we do. Thank you for all the imaginative, fantastic work that's happened over that time, so still try to make it work. So, once again, now we get to this time where we're looking at cuts, we're looking at deficits, we're looking at what can we save, or we're looking at what potential sources of revenue that we have. All the good work of this Blue Ribbon Panel, you know, has brought us here, and unfortunately, thank you for that work, there was not a set of recommendations that balanced our budget. And so we're looking outside of those recommendations, we're looking where could we possibly generate revenue? Obviously, people have heard about city income tax, where basically we vote, you know, for a bunch of other people to pay taxes here. I'm not sure if that creates skin in the game or if that creates resentment. I don't know how that plays out for people who don't live in the city. That's something we can decide. But for the first time now, in almost 11 years, I'm sitting here with an opportunity to dream a dream. And, you know, this is, you know, I have a hard time, I'll tell you quite frankly, if you can feel how, you know, tell how I feel about this. I sometimes feel like taking it comfortable in a certain place. And if you get comfortable in a place of want, if you get comfortable in a place where we're the underdog, and that's where we, that's where we do the best job, that's where we say, you know, we're in bad shape because people are putting us here. And sudden, and we begin to think of ourselves in that way, and that's how we define ourselves. And suddenly, there's a possible possibility for an opportunity for us to say, wait a second, we've been talking about all these great things, now I wonder, can we do that? Are we really up to that task? You know, it's a lot more comfortable saying, well, of course we can do it, we want to have the revenues. But just step out there and step into that void, you know, this undefined area where we're now possibly going to be held responsible for doing some of the good work that we need to do in this whole country, right here in Kalamazoo, and having the resources to do that. That takes some courage to make that adjustment. There's some fear involved in that, and it takes imagination. And that all said, I just want to bring us back to the goals we've laid out and the opportunity that we have right here, real opportunity. And I want to thank our city manager, I want to thank our mayor for doing the work that you And I want to thank our city manager, I want to thank our mayor for doing the work that you have been doing. Stage got stepped for it, I think all the more that Blue Ribbon Panel work. And I think it is unbelievable, amazing, you know, standing on the edge of history kind of an opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ozark.
Well, I'll follow that very impact of speech with just more of those questions.
Somehow I knew you were.
Yes. So with the, the Foundation for Excellence model, you know, it's a three-year sort of interim from my understanding, and then there's a, a large amount of money that would need to have, you know, be developed over those three years. And you had mentioned if, you know, if that does not come to pass, we can still be, you know, exploring an income tax. So, you know, let's, let's fast forward, say, three years and we're at that what-if situation. We rolled taxes back to twelve mils. At that point, you know, if, if this doesn't happen, we're either looking at an income tax or we're going to roll property taxes back up to nineteen, I assume, because obviously it would be bankrupt if you didn't. Does that, does that roll up then require this sort of vote? Or is that still within our authority to go straight from twelve to nineteen, point whatnot, at, at the control of the commission law?
Commissioner.
The commission can do that. You are authorized up to nineteen point two seven. We continue the Hadley and Prop eight breaks on that, which continue to operate it out. My guess is we probably continue to tumble a little bit in three years, maybe go from nineteen point two seven to nineteen point two two or something like that. But that's your authorization. You can go all the way up to that. So if you happen to drop it down, you can still jump back up at any time. That's what you're authorized to do. You don't need to vote. The commission can do that.
Because that's, that's one concern I have is, you know, just thinking theoretically in the, you know, not looking at the, and what is the term, the aspirational dollars, but just the, you know, dropping the, dropping the millage dollars. If I think of just that particular pot of money, you know, a vote now on an income tax would be a very honest discussion because we, we don't have it and we're not up against the gun. You know, it, it would be citizens deciding, do we mind if that's us or not? I worry about having that same discussion with the added component of, well, you're either going to pass an income tax or your property taxes are going to jack way back up again. So that's, that's a concern I have on the what-if portion, if we were to get into that in three years. So that's.
Well, a, a, a way to address that branch would be to put on the ballot the, well, first of all, I, I would say that we could approve the philanthropic approach with the understanding that the income tax would go on the ballot for becoming active in three years. Okay? If the goals of the thing are not met, if the, if they are not met. So that way, all the people who were elected in this term, when we were elected to deal with this problem, which is really up there on our, in our wheelhouse when we were elected. We're not passing anything down, down the road. We clearly say that, that in three years that these goals are met, the income tax will go into effect. Now, what that does is really say, gets a commitment going all across the board to make this work. And it doesn't take anything down the road. The people now can decide, this is very sweet, and we're going to work for it. Because if it doesn't succeed, we're going to have to do something. Let's just take that step now and not give it to some other commission to have to deal with. Because I'm here and maybe this could be my last term. I don't want to leave it hanging for somebody else to deal with. This is for many of us, I, I, maybe I shouldn't speak for others, but certainly for me, this is a chance for us to really step up and solve this once and for all. I see a way to do it and I would love to have affirmation from the voters saying that we, in a referendum, approved. Well, it has to go, has to go on the ballot, but you can't approve that in advance. But I think that would really give clarity to the whole thing. Not wait for three years and, and if that have to do with that uncertainty and all the games that should be played with, with lining up people as a supporter or not supporter and all the other things that can kind of change the picture completely. We know pretty well what the situation is right now. We can solve it in a way that gives certainty to it. Now, I said, if, if the goals are met, then the income tax doesn't have to go into effect. You can build that, build that into the, the, the way the ballot language is. So I hope that's something we can consider. But it needs a lot more discussion if we're going to have tonight.
Lieutenant, our commissioner's name?
So I've got just a couple of questions. So does anyone who can be a donor to the Foundation for Excellence, which is awesome, although I would wager that probably only folks who can afford to donate to the Foundation for Excellence will. But could you share with all of us both the source of the seventy million dollars and also this fully endowed fund, what the numbers look like on that and where that money is coming from?
So there are a lot of details yet to be worked out. For the seventy million, there's been some group of donors that have been identified that have had history of philanthrop, you know, philanthropy in this community, if that's a word. Thank you! And so that would be the basis for the seventy million. The long term would need to be determined based on the funds needed to, to do the work. So that, that would be the next step of, of the process.
So and we, we've talked about this a few times. And so I think, you know, one of the key components of this, you mentioned earlier on, is trust. And knowing, you know, having this be sort of a shared trust between the city and between the donors. And so I feel it's really important for us to know, for the city to know exactly who those donors are. And to also have some understanding where this, you know, money for the foundation later on is going to come from. And it just because I think it's important for us to know what the, what the logistics are, right? If there's, if there's a lot of secrecy, then there's very little trust. And, and you know, what I've been struggling with is the trust aspect of trust. So yeah, so I don't know that saying, well, we've got a group of philanthropic donors is good enough for me when we're talking about our general fund.
So I'm going to take this because I've said this from the start. The people we met with was William Johnston and William Parfitt. Those are the folks that we met with at the table to have this discussion because they have been, have a long legacy of philanthropy in this.
The latter being.
I'm channeling you over here in this community. People that I've known all my life or a good chunk of my life. And so when we started talking to them, what our options were, we said, we can imagine something as significant as the Kalamazoo Promise. Now, this would have been, I would love for this work to have happened where it could have been like the Kalamazoo Promise, whomever those donors are, God bless it, I would love for that to have happened. But we took this saying, hey, is there a different way to move forward? There are individuals, those individuals that have committed that we will be there and we will work to get others. And that's what the three-year period is about, to allow us not to be thinking about that scarcity mentality and to give you some relief and to do some great things, even if we only get those great things for three years. But that's the time to, that the work would be done to fulfill phase two, which is the foundation. So that's the intent. And the foundation, so in, in my mind, it's about going into the community and asking those that are from philanthrop.
My owner pissed.
Donors, I was going to be looking good on television. You know, I, I had a conversation with a pastoral member and his church is trying to determine a way to do this and got excited that we're there. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of ways. I'm, you don't even want to write a check. I'll take the check today. And you start off being the first philanthropist to, to enter the space. So just answering your question, I don't think, if you're expecting us to tell you or anyone to tell you in this room that the work has all been done, that's not what I or the city manager or the city attorney can check. Because this, this is a heavy lift. So what we can tell you is that the work is intended to do this over here. We can't tell you also that, well, I'll end there. Just want to answer your question before I.
Well, I just have a clarifying question. So, so they're going to help us then figure out how to get the rest of the money back in three years to fund the foundation?
Yeah, yes.
And now, right now, I think I'm still sort of processing a lot of stuff.
Well, I would like to celebrate this opportunity that we got right here with, with Commissioner Anderson. Fifteen years ago, in two thousand and one, we started a poverty initiative in this city. And you want to know what our statistics are today? The national poverty rate in the country is about fourteen percent. Poverty rate in the city of Kalamazoo is thirty-six percent. The national poverty rate for children is about nineteen percent. Poverty rate for children in Kalamazoo is forty percent. Poverty rate among African-Americans in our community is forty-four percent. Poverty rate among African-American kids in our city is fifty-seven percent. And now we have this opportunity to change it. We have the promise here. And Ron Washington's sitting back here and he's knocking himself out to make this thing work, as are so many people in this community, to, to help everybody to a high-quality life. But no matter what we're doing, if we don't do something about the poverty that these kids face, too many of those kids aren't going to be able to take advantage of that promise. We got this opportunity to make this city a model for the country. And I can't wait this season. I don't want to do anything about an income tax at this point. I'm going to deal with what we got on the table and make this work for the city, make it work for the kids in the city, and I know we can do it.
Other towns, Commissioner?
Well, I know that some, you know, maybe not official, you know, as far as making motions, sometimes we make a motion second before we have discussion.
This was a pretty, I did this because this was a pretty, pretty big deal. I think you folks, if you were to.
Well, so, so, I mean, I have a, my feeling is, is, and we can continue to discuss it, but I'd like to get a motion on the table, actually. I don't know if it's too early for that?
Your folks do what you do.
Okay, so I'll put it out there. No one has to support it. But I would like to have a motion, a proposed motion, that basically says to the city manager, please put, you know, the details together for us. Please work and come back to us with, you know, a draft MOU with some ideas about what the parameters and expectations would be. Answer some of those questions that various commissioners have. Answer questions about, you know, what kind of commitment it is. Is this a handshake? Is this a trust kind of a deal? You know, what does this look like? Bring something like that related to that proposal for the Foundation for Excellence back to the city commission. I would like to see that happen before the end of September. So I'm proposing that, that we ask the administration to fill itself, give us something to react to in a regular meeting and do it post-game.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Anderson. Is there support, supported by Commissioner?
Not.
We're still in discussion. Commissioner Ozark, I saw first.
So, so one thing I'm still trying to wrap my head around is really the, the breakdown between the, you know, the aspirational money versus this structural deficit. Because I, I don't think there's really a whole lot of concern about philanthropists donating money for, for projects that are going to improve our community, whether that be, you know, on a three-year, three-year basis or long-term. You know, I suspect that generally people like grants and, and dollars to, to grow programming. So what I'm really trying to understand is, is that, is that offer contingent upon not exploring an income tax and having the other dollars replace that? Or is that some desire that they have regardless of what we do to fix our structural deficit? Because I would assume, you know, that the desire to help, you know, generational poverty and shared prosperity is something that's not contingent upon how we address our structural deficit. But I, I guess I'd want some clarity on exactly, you know, if this is a, a total package or it's, you know, two separate things that are just being offered at the same time.
So the, the way I'll answer the question is, we took an idea in whatever those individuals, whatever anyone thinks about the income tax, that's not, we didn't take an income tax. We took the idea of something totally different and said, would you be interested in joining us on this trip? Pretty much. So that's what was, what is tentatively agreed to. Anything beyond that comes out in whatever memorandum of understanding, all the, all the nuts and bolts, the terms, your expectations of how we move forward, the understanding that you are the city commission and you're the governance body, all of that is codified in agreements that many of us have agreements that we have in our work lives, in our home lives, that's codified your intentions in that. Nothing gets signed unless four people in this body stay in. So that's the best I can answer your question. This is what we brought forward to ask if you would participate in the meeting. So we're still in discussion.
Deb, can you answer my question?
Sure. Well, I think I'd go along with David's motion if I had to assure us that what we end up with in, in September is something that takes fully under this commission's control what we're about to commit to. So that if the things work like they're supposed to, income tax, given that the voters approve it, it gets dropped. And that's built into a ballot proposal. So that we all have certainty that we've got to work, all of us, to make this happen in the next few years. That way, the clarity of, of purpose is communicated to all of us, not just the people on the commission, but everybody in the city. Everybody outside the city that doesn't want to see an income tax, who would love to see Kalamazoo prosper, would be also involved with making that work. So the very thing I've been after for, ever since I got on the city commission, getting other people involved, this is a way to do it. So if, I hope, maybe I'll have to make a separate motion and prepare. Very simple, I know, is if we could just, if some assurance that one other thing that would be in the package that we got back to us was, is a way forward that doesn't take any part of this down the road. That income tax won't happen if we live on our, our, I would love that.
Other comments, Commissioner? Commissioner Ozark?
Just wanted to, you know, just address some general observations, thoughts, concerns, kind of, it's just some, two different approaches. I mean, certainly I ran for office with the intent, probably number one priority, to solve our structural problem. You know, this city's just had, it's been beaten down year after year. We're not getting where we need to be. We can't get division. So, you know, number one priority for me is solve the structural problem. So my number one goal with all this is solving that. I see two things that do solve it. One of them, and, and this is where, you know, I really struggle, one of those options puts the fate of that solution in the hands of our voters. And that obviously is a smaller dollar amount than the other option. And that obviously is a smaller dollar amount than the other option, if you take it in totality, but it, it says, Kalamazoo voters, this is a solution that, that we're presenting to you to say yes or no to, um, and that fate is in your hands. The other option, um, and, and, you know, all the thank yous in the world for, for people being generous, um, puts our fate for financial, uh, stability in the hands of not our citizens, but donors. Um, and I'm not saying that's necessarily bad, I'm just saying it's a very important distinction for me to recognize that, um, it's something not in the, it's not my control, it's not in control of citizens, it's, we are relying on someone else to come through for us. Um, and maybe that's what we want to do, but it, it's just very important, important for me to have to recognize the differences in, um, who is going to be responsible for our stability long-term. Um, now, just philosophically, I favor Kalamazoo citizens being in control of our destiny to the greatest extent possible. Um, you know, this, uh, the, the Foundation for Excellence is a fascinating idea, and it's, I mean, it's something that just doesn't exist. It doesn't exist anywhere, I mean, as you think, um, there's a lot of excitement with that, there's, you know, a thousand what-ifs. Um, and for me, it, it creates a new stakeholder that, in government, that doesn't currently exist. You know, today, you have citizens, you have, you know, they're taxpayers, and you have service users, um, and those are primarily the people on government, and they have sort of their legitimate stakeholder role in how we spend those dollars. And then, of course, on top of that, you have our donors, you know, we, we accept grants all the time, you know, when coming to the commission, we accept them, and, and there's a, you know, a very clear set of expectations for those dollars. You will do this, and they'll be reporting and whatnot. Um, this creates a, a new stakeholder that simply just untested. Not saying it's bad or good, it's just is an, an unknown that, that's worth recognizing. Um, and I, I think there, there's a lot of, there could be a lot of concern over what, what influence does that stakeholder have? Because ultimately, power exists in many forms. There's, there's legal power, you know, you have a contract with me, you do this, and then there's influential power and, you know, politics and how things work in the city, and that exists regardless. But I think, you know, given the dollar amount we're talking about, there, there's a legitimate room, um, for pause and deeper thought as to what that means to have a new type of stakeholder that, you know, is essentially funding, um, in its totality, or the proposal that it is, you know, they're funding the general fund for basic services, not just, um, not just additional programming or, or, you know, great stuff that we want to move to. Um, and then you get to the what-if, you have to ever lean off of that, what does that mean? So there's, there's a lot of, um, you know, I think community discussions to be had, um, this is being rolled out to the community right now. I can't speak for, for all voters, I mean, I've spoken with some people, you know, ranging from very concerned about it to very excited about it. Um, so I'd love to have more, more time for discussion on some of those philosophical ideas of, are we, are we ready to build there, and is that the right choice to do compared to the other options? Personally, I, I strongly favor, um, you know, some version of putting the structural deficit in the hands of our citizens and, and leaving that decision up, up to them so that we know there's no three-year, five-year, six-year problem we've got to resolve, just to stay solvent. Um, and, and then absolutely exploring how we can have additional dollars in the city for, um, for new technical improvements, Foundation for Excellence, Magic Kalamazoo 2025, Shared Prosperity, all of these things. Um, so that's, that's just my thoughts.
Commissioner Anderson? Oh, okay, so, just a couple things, kind of, about that. I guess just for an overlay here, it's too late to put an income tax under November ballot anyway. So we got months and months and months to talk about it, and, and we can talk about that, and that really, to me, doesn't have a direct effect on the motion, which was asking for details about this thing to be brought back to the city commission. So we can kind of veer off now, the motion specifically about this opportunity, Foundation for Excellence, we're asking for details, we're asking for them to come back to the city commission for us to discuss the particulars of that. So that's what I'm asking for, and, and there's no rush that has to occur right now in the earliest possible opportunity, I mean, maybe February or, or May, perhaps, if a decision were made, put it on the ballot. So we could discuss an income tax to a great extent, and its merits or lack thereof, and, you know, decide to put it on, and the voters can get to decide based on their own determinations of merits, but for now, because this is proposed, and because I think some clarity needs to occur for us to move forward on it, that's why I put that motion forward. Please, administration, come back with some more detail, give us something to look at specific to this alternative.
It's clearly important, something like this, and if we're going to, um, take something like this on, we need to make sure we're doing it responsibly, so I would fully support more details, right? Um, because I, I mean, it, it sounds very exciting, but I think we're lacking in some, in some major details.
Commissioner? Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I do would support this, the motion of, of David, Commissioner Anderson, uh, to get, to flesh this out more and, and to come back with a, a, a more thorough package, uh, but as of right now, I'd kind of like to, to both approve the new package, uh, unless, without seeing an expiration of, uh, a, a delay in activation of an income tax, if the aspirations for the funding mechanism, uh, don't materialize as, as, as gone, so we all know what we're up against from outside. I, that's just kind of like a side feature of what David is asking, but it's key for me to, uh, how I vote at, at the end, uh, to, to know how we're dealing with something we could be kicking down the road and leaving a vagueness around and a lot of, uh, confidence that we're uncertain. So without understanding, I'm also, I, I'd favor, uh, Commissioner Anderson's, uh, motion.
Commissioner Ozark?
Uh, I, I guess on a similar note, and you may have suspected as much from, from the questions we've been asking, but, um, in, in the asking of for more information, I, I would like to, you know, to see us flesh out that structural piece, and if this, you know, what willingness or lack thereof there is to, to look at a, a combined model, should we, should we even want it? But certainly, you know, if, if discussions move forward and the answer is, um, we, we aren't interested in that from, from the donors, um, then that obviously, you know, gives us a little bit of direction and possible evidence for, you know, we don't want to waste our time on things that aren't a possibility. So I, I just, um, you know, before I'm willing to say yes, I just want to say that if I say yes, it's because I want us to know a little bit more about those options, those particles we're exploring. Um, because ultimately, as I said, I want our structural problem fixed, um, in a way that no one has to fix it again, ever. Um, and that's outside of provisioning, Magic Kalamazoo, and all of the other great, very exciting things. You know, I, I just desperately want the citizens, the staff, everyone, to stop worrying about how we're dealing with this structural deficit that has just plagued this city for, for a decade or decades, certainly very bad since the, um, since the housing crash, so...
Any questions? So I think all of those are important conversations to have, I believe we have the time to do it. What I would offer is, sort of, not as a moment, but as I picture it, especially listening to what the, the staff has requested, you know, keep hearing things like, what are the terms, what are the details, add some memorandum of understanding, what would be the understandings you ran into, um, like regarding moving something like this forward? Your no-gos, your goes, all those, go, all, all of that, they've been to there. And so, am I clear? You know, like, clear is that what you're understanding, and I, or is you asking?
Yes.
Other comments before we open it up to the, uh, final? All right, here, now, this is now the opportunity for any citizen to comment on this, I can step forward as best you can, you can stand where you are, there's no sense in stepping forward, give us your name and whether you're a citizen of this city.
My name's Golden Ryder. I just, I'd like to suggest that you have some actual citizen involvement. Everybody here, up here on the commission, is thinking about this from the point of view of the city on overgrowth, but from the point of view of somebody that's going to be old or pay for, they wear taxes, um, I would like the citizenry to be a little more, I mean, even have just citizen representatives or something to stay involved in this and to know what's going on, because if you start pushing, I mean, you know, a bunch of you have been saying, oh, yes, I'm, I'm for the citizen, well, I am the citizen, and I'm gonna, I, I may very well fight against an income tax, I don't want to pay more taxes. So I suggest strongly that you get some of us on the, on your committee meetings when you talk about this.
And get down to the meeting.
Ma'am, if you want to speak, if you want to go next, give us your name and whether you're a citizen.
Sure, my name's Barbara Baller, I'm a supporter. You know, you, you're talking around the subject, you know, we have no real nitty-gritty of how you're going to do, you need to smooth there, and this is sort of Trump-like, you know? Well, well, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do this, but we're not gonna really exactly tell you how, how we're going to do that. You know, and I think, I think other people agree, how are you going to exactly make this happen? Am I right? From what you have, we are pretty much the smartest guy up there, from what I can tell. Well, I mean, you know, what do you mean, now, you're a scientist, you're a PhD, I suspect, you know?
We're kind of a bad politics expert.
Well, no, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, I'm an old pet in the house, I'm not, I'm not judging anyone, I don't know anyone wrong. But, you know, let's not, let, let's not run around the house to get to the front door. Let's get down to the nitty-gritty, tell us what we need to do, and get everyone involved. You know, it's not one plus one, it's two on us. And, you know, you're dancing around the house, we're gonna do this, it's gonna be great, ya, 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 says cool, ah, but then you're not telling us how you're gonna do it. And that's what we need to hear. We need to hear how exactly you're going to do it. And Don, I love your enthusiasm, especially love where you're from, because that's where I'm from, too, you know? Love the accent, but you know what? You know, and I love the fact that you've been here as long as you've been on the commission, because we are part of the people that put you here. And, and thank you for being you, because you are definitely compassionate, and then gentlemen right here are compassionate, well, we love that. You know, I'm definitely compassionate, ask anyone, especially the police, they would be there. But the problem is, we're not getting the nitty-gritty, we're not getting the how you're gonna do this, who's gonna be in charge of the money, who's gonna delegate it all, so...
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Get, get off the other question, but, um, who's gonna be designating the money? You know, if you say there's going to be people who like this, designate...
They are. Hang on, hang on, she, it's her time.
Thank you. You know, and it does say, um, it says, it says separation between the donors and the city, and it says key elements, if you must.
Sir?
Um, the Foundation for Excellence would be created for separation between donors and city. So, so, I mean, so, so where, where, where's the separation between the donors and the city? And, you know, who's gonna be the independent governance? Like, you know, it's all like, you know, we're talking to a rep, we're running around the house, get to the front door, yeah? Am, am I wrong? How do you get this?
Thank you, ma'am, gentlemen, over and yes.
Uh, Billy, my name is Brad Dorian.
Do you live in the cities?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I agree with the, with the gentleman and the woman. Um, I would like to, I would like to pay more taxes, however, if tax is going to the human, you know, that's what I do, it's a definite requirement, so I agree with that. I also feel as though the citizens should be involved to know what the plan is. Now, on the same note, Kalamazoo is an excellent program, you don't know the plan, how that was incorporated, and I don't mind not knowing how it was incorporated if my children and family can exercise that ability. However, I do also strongly suggest that if you do have citizens to know how the plan is going to be created, I suggest to go to the parents of the children that should pay that majority of the poverty rate in the city, which it will benefit them greatly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen here? Yes, sir.
I'm Richard Stewart, I am the president of the city, and I am surprised that the commission has made some point, they're disingenuous place on the Blue Ribbon Panel. The Blue Ribbon Panel strongly brought up the issue of cost containment, cost reductions before any additional reference, and that hasn't been talked about today by people. In fact, even one of the commissioners sat on that panel, and I think he sits here and faces some of those people, and knows exactly what was not brought up today. We have issues that are institutional in nature, and for ten years, like Mr. Anderson said, we have had financial difficulties. Well, maybe it's time for Mr. Anderson not to get here. Yes, ten years have been pretty bad. So where do we take responsibility for those ten years, and the mismanagement that has occurred up to now, rather than present you with a reward, a win called upon money, which you tax on the workers of this city, would be even greater. This is gent certification by another name. You are, who's going to benefit the most here? The nonprofits, for one, we have some toxic nonprofits. We have city staff that benefits, I think our second city manager got a raise from planner, city assistant manager number two, I think it's over a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year, okay? I think city assistant manager number three earns over a hundred and nine thousand, I believe, that's a lot of money, folks, to be asking us to pay for you. And I heard people at the Blue Ribbon Panel said, that's the first issue, cost, and be responsible for the money you have before we give you one. You're voting on it, if you take this tax, you are increasing rents to the citizens. Did I hear any of you bring up the negatives today? Not one of you had the guts, to be honest with these people, on the negatives, sure there's positives, but you just raised through Mr. Anderson's idea of instructing the city manager to put together some information for you, and that one you said, it less include some citizens in that presentation. So now, behind our backs, it presents this to you, and we get three minutes to rebut again. And I think it's very disingenuous of, of the position you took today, all positive, but there's a third option, rather than the donors controlling our lives, and it's the income tax, taxing only those of us who work. The third is get you, other people, get people smarter than you in charge of, right? That is the third option that we're not talking about. And how do we do that? We vote. Eighty-five percent of us did not vote for any one of you. And what we need to vote or activate is the problem today, not money. Jobs create money. Every time a house is sold, comes uncapped, so for you to sit there and lie to us and say, pretend like these numbers aren't gonna change because every time a house is sold, or any one of those hundred... Or any one of those hundred-plus properties you acquired as a city and took off the tax rules, the minute you sell them, they go back on the tax rules. So, I propose sell about fifty of those vacant. City attorney's office is sitting there bawling down.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Gentlemen in the shirt, in the front row.
My name is Michael Jeffrey, and I live in the city of Kalamazoo. I want to thank you for getting so creative. I think this is the only unit of government I've ever heard of that was looking at this sort of a creative idea instead of just take more money from the citizens. I really, really appreciate that. I think, I think, you know, the facts speak for themselves. Whether or not you're the smartest uniformed room or not, since 2002, the state of Michigan has decreased revenue sharing to municipal by fifty-seven percent. That's the most of any state in the United States. The closest second was Kansas. They decreased by fourteen percent in sales. And North Dakota increased by two-hundred-and-thirty-one percent. So, I wanna thank you for your tireless work. These are difficult decisions. And I can't believe that we have an opportunity to have philanthropists paint our streets and fix our sidewalks. I love the idea of living in a community where we share those sorts of responsibilities. I love living in a city that has Kalamazoo Promise and such a strong community of, that we're all in it together. I do think that the devil's in the details on this. I would love to know what those details are. And you guys don't have a model for this, so you're gonna have to dig deeper and not screw it up, because it'd be easy to do it. So, thank you for being creative. Please keep us in the loop and don't give up trying to not just have a stable taxes.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen in the air, black.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Derek Wissner. I live in the city. I have property owner, business owner. I feel like I'm listening to a different presentation than some, I guess. I really have to kind of listen to hear what was being said, because it didn't sound credible to me. It didn't sound like it was believable. And I don't really quite understand why we're writing. We're basically being presented with an option of seventy million dollars for years with what's sounding like a half a billion dollar follow-up to basically help fund our general revenue for our general fund for perpetuity. You were arguing about it. I don't understand it.
Don't do that, please. That didn't have his time.
Obviously, we have problems with the city. And obviously, nobody wants to pay tax, more tax, because I understand, Mr. Stewart, I understand your concern over nonprofits. Pay the tax, that's what it's set up to result. I want, the proposals that I'm hearing is that I will pay less property taxes on my properties, and I will pay slightly more income tax. I can afford a hundred and fifty dollars a year. I can do that. And if that's gonna help me not trip over the sidewalk, if that's gonna help my kids go to a better school, absolutely sign me up. I'll pay for two. I'm happy to do that. It's ridiculous that we're arguing about this in this point with regards to citizens' input. My God, Rebecca is putting together an unprecedented vision plan for 2025 right now. It's got, I don't know, how many thousand?
How many thousands walked out?
How many thousands of citizens are putting their ideas into this process to plan for where we wanna be in 2025? If you have ideas, talk to Rebecca. She wants to find you. She's at five or six events a week getting citizens' input. That's the time to talk. This is the time to talk. These are the people we elect for this. This is ridiculous that we're arguing about this. Absolutely ridiculous. Yes, please, let's get the details. Passionate, make sure there's no strings. But my God, we gotta, please, we need to, we need to do the full process rollout on this. This is huge.
Thank you, sir. Young lady in the second row, first seat.
My name is Matt Jordan Woods. First thing I'd like to say...
Do you live in the city, ma'am?
I live in the city. I live in this neighborhood, love it. First thing I'd like to thank Jim and everyone else that was involved in talking with the foundation. Because we are talking about two things. One is that there's some dollars so that you will not have to have an income tax. So, and the other one is, if those dollars don't come through, you may have to still go to an income tax. But the other thing that I would like to say is that we have to stop thinking that we want, that people will work and not be paid, to bring up people's salaries, to talk about they don't deserve them, when you want to get paid for what you do. I am not paying for what I do, but I know it's because we don't have the money to pay for what I do. And I resent the fact that you would try to make someone not get paid. We have city employees who are ready to read because they're doing three people's jobs. I wanna thank you for looking for some other dollars to make sure that those people don't work like slaves. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna go gentleman in the blue.
Thank you, Bobby. My shoes on, Mike Seals. I don't live in the city, but I have property in the city. So, I do pay taxes in the city. I commend you guys on a job well done. I'm really surprised this was out of the box thinking. The idea that people that are affluent in our community have an opportunity to help our community in a time of need is tremendous. Our people need to help. Your people need to help. Our community needs to help. If they're going to help put together an endowment that they have no control over because that control's been bestowed upon you, and that endowment has no controls after it's collected, because once it's collected, none of the donors matter at that point. And the money that's produced by that endowment is in perpetuity. We're always gonna have it. And the only people that are gonna have the control of it are you, at least according to what you're telling us. So, I commend you on a job well done. This is great. And I'm glad that the city is looking outside the box, because you guys have had challenges. And the number of employees you've lost, I've known a lot of them that have left the city because of disappointments in pay and cuts in their benefits. Here's an opportunity. I say grab it. Make it happen. Do what you gotta do to get it done. And I'll support you.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen in the black, glasses.
Commissioner Bobby, I'm city manager. I just want to commend you for an honestly good job. I just want to commend you around the table.
Can we get your name, sir?
Kelly Lee McCormick. Some of you around the table know that I've been around the city, and I just wanted to explain something. I just want to remind you of a little history. This is not the first time donors have come to the aid of the city. Bob Johns, Pfizer, Bronson, gorgeous. They have all donated huge sums of money to help balance the budget of the land that is now very flat. So, this is in keeping with the initiative of Kalamazoo. And I think it's great that this is gonna happen. And I just want to commend all of you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna go here. Someone with a beard and glasses.
My name's Nathan Dannison. I live in the city. I have just a couple of thoughts about this and then a question. I don't know if you can respond to the question or not, but I wanna put it out there. The first is that this is really exciting, that there is a clear separation between the donors and the city, given a couple of overarching themes like youth improvement and eliminating generational poverty, giving the voters control over the dispersal of these funds via the electoral system that we have in place. That, to me, is really exciting, because it's gonna give us an opportunity to fund some things that aren't super sexy to philanthropic operations. You know, people don't like to donate money for wastewater treatment and stuff like that. But this gives us an opportunity to have a little bit more control over where that revenue's gonna go. It feels like a very kind of Nordic system to me, having a public trust for the benefit of citizens. I know that my own family and people who I know would be honored to give what little we could give, maybe a hundred, two hundred dollars, knowing that that is not going to be spent like tax dollars, but will be invested in perpetuity for the benefit of the city. So, that two hundred dollars, instead of just being pulled out of my paycheck for this, is gonna go into a trust that'll last forever. The other thing is, I work for a nonprofit organization that would love to support the municipality, but we don't always know how best to do so. And this is gonna give our nonprofit organizations something, maybe not a pilot program, but something where they can make an investment for the benefit of the city, but where the citizens get to decide how that revenue goes to work. And the question I have is, you mentioned we'll reduce the tax to twelve mils, eventually, hopefully even to ten mils. How does ten mils compare to the other municipalities that surround Kalamazoo right now? How competitive would that make us?
Thank you, sir. I'm trying to go back and forth. Young lady with glasses in the blue, her green.
I understand, I do what I can. So, first of all, I wanna join those who have said, "Wow, what phenomenal opportunities." And thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing. It's so great. At the same time, I also want to acknowledge that we are a community that, uh, heard events our life with examples of power, lots of money, especially in the state of Michigan, trying to influence behaviors. We're a lot of, I would consider it a problem. We had that starting conversation act, we have the tent building bridge back on Island. We know what's going on in Detroit. So, I want to acknowledge that there is new theater and distrust also going on. And I also say, we can live with both of these emotions. Forward, aggressive voting. Let's not throw away what we remember. Let's not turn our man on what an incredible opportunity this money, this setup means because we are afraid of what's going on. And don't just accept it without acknowledging that, yeah, there are, you know, we don't even know how we're structured this, so that we address those concerns. And I want to say, one way that we can address that concern is by, of course, citizen by citizen, resident involvement. Not that we don't involve people who aren't residents, who are disabled, but that we increase the participation of citizens. I mean, that's a way to validate, forward, with such incredible opportunity, at the same time addressing some of the fear that I hear, I see, I feel. I also, I think, take a page from Bernie Sanders, and if you're looking for donors, don't just stop at whatever hundred and twenty-dollar donation. Drop down to twenty-seven dollars. Drop down. Get by and pour that donation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone in the white shirt?
My name's Zach Lester. I live in the city. First off, I think this is a great opportunity. I don't think I've ever heard of an opportunity like this before. I did a quick little Google search. The only results were something like Robocop, which just sounds like it will not be. Everything will be remaining in the city's control, the city commission's control. I think this is a lot better option than an income tax. I think the income tax will only serve to further economic barriers to those that are economically disadvantaged. Those that are economically disadvantaged typically rent, don't own. When the city's property tax will go lower, that's not gonna get passed to them. The savings won't get passed to them, and then they're gonna have an income tax on top of that. I question too, how much we would actually raise on an income tax, because there's the costs of collecting that income tax. And I've heard with Detroit that they pass that cost on to the state because they couldn't even manage the cost of collecting an income tax. I think this is a great opportunity. I don't think this option should not be looked at. I think it really needs to be explored. I'm willing to bet, when the promise was first thought of, there were a lot of answers that weren't known, there were a lot of questions, there were a lot of fears, there were a lot of things, but there was a lot of excitement, and I'm sensing a lot of excitement here too. And I think that, right now, we're not deciding to do this. I think we're deciding to explore this as an option, and I think that needs to be explored as an option. And I think this is a great, great opportunity. I would also like to maybe, because this was their accent, and they know a lot of the data that the rest of us regular citizens don't know, because they sat and worked on income and revenue for so long. So, I think this really needs to be looked at thoroughly. I do hope that everything would be remaining under the city commission's control, and that's what I'm understanding will be the case. We won't be selling the police department as they did in a certain movie. So, I'm really excited about this. I think it's a lot better of an option than an income tax.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna go to this gentleman here.
My name is Chad, right out of the city of Kalamazoo. Just a few things. One, thank you, thank you, thank you. If I'm not mistaken, you are introducing this to us. So, this isn't something that you're saying, "This is what we're gonna do next week." You're introducing this to us. So, they're not trying to slip anything to us backdoor. They're saying, "This is what we're gonna introduce to you. We're gonna go back to the table, we're gonna work on it again, we're gonna reintroduce it to you." So, don't get scared. Don't think conspiracies are all over the city. We are trying to do something different. Like you said, when the Kalamazoo Promise was introduced, nobody knew exactly what was going on. Nobody went to these philanthropists and slapped their hand and said, "We didn't want your money." You were excited. I know I was. But let's see what happens. I believe that this panel will come up with some great ideas. I'm charging you to come up with great ideas, because if you don't, you will hear from me. And I believe to hear from everybody behind you, because we're trusting you to make this work. When it comes down to taxes being increased, sir, they will put that on the tax, they will put that on the bill, and they'll put that up to vote, and that's not given a hundred percent that they're gonna take. Because people will say, "I'm tired of you taxing me again." And then where are we at? You're back at looking at the same numbers, trying to figure out, "Gonna rob Peter and make Paul." We have a blessing in front of us. Do not throw away the blessing because it didn't come in the way you thought it would come. Now, there's a saying, "There was a man stuck on a roof, and it was a flood. God sent me, 'I want you to save me.'" Here comes a boat. That's not how I want you to save me. They've got the helicopter. That's not how you want me to save you. That's not how I want you to save me. He drowns. Why didn't you save me? I sent you a boat and a helicopter. What else did you want? They're sending us a blessing. We cannot look a gift horse in the mouth. They're laying out everything as well as they can right now with what they have. And when you know better, am I correct? And you correct me if I'm wrong. When you know better, we'll know better. When you have the information, you'll give that information to us, and we will be able to make an informed decision on which direction to go. Am I correct? So, people, give 'em a dead gum break. They're working hard, they're trying. I don't see anybody in this room coming up with any other ideas. If you do, email them. If you got the wherewithal to write a seventy-million-dollar check, I think the commission will take it. Until then, get on board. If you don't have anything positive to say, spread it into your pillow.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Bruce Mark, and I'm a resident of the city. I have a little more cautious response to what I've heard than some others are expressing. Obviously, if some generous donors want to give us tens of millions of dollars, we should take it, and it represents a nice opportunity for the community. But what I heard tonight, if I understood it, and it was a little, it wasn't entirely clear, I'd have a lot of questions if I were sitting in your seat. What I heard tonight is a three-year solution, or a three-year, i.e. enough money to see us through the... us through this structural deficit for the next three years. After that, to maintain an endowment, which would solve our structural deficit problem, I'm guessing, is going to take a mountain, a mountain, in my opinion. It sounds to me like we're talking about a parallel Kalamazoo Community Foundation. And as somebody who's worked with a community foundation over the years, watched them and their efforts to raise money from the community, they're very sophisticated, their materials are impressive, they're out there talking to everybody all the time, I'm a lawyer, my clients are hearing from them constantly, they struggle, they really struggle to, and they're really talking about doing about the same things with their money that, you know, you would like to do with some of the ideas or some of the goals that you've put forward. So I'm concerned that the second part of this, beyond that first influx of money, is pie in the sky, is dreaming. And so until we know that that's doable, I urge some healthy skepticism. I'd also just like to say that, you know, I served on the city commission thirty years ago, it has disappointed me for the last thirty years, that our fiscal situation was so utterly dependent on the property tax. Property tax doesn't respond very well to increases and decreases in the economy, it lags behind all the time. Any institution that has just one source of income is always in a precarious situation. So I would urge you not to slow down in your consideration of the income tax. It's the only alternative or supplement to the property tax that's available to us. With this new money, maybe we can do some creative things about the way the ordinance looks. But please, 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 continue to consider this as a way of stabilizing the revenue sources on which all we hope to see the city accomplish depends. And thanks for all your good efforts.
Thank you, sir. Can I go? Sir, you up in the green?
Yeah, yeah, I'm definitely not trying to, definitely want to thank everybody for their hard work.
Can we get your name and the password?
Jacob Johnson, City Council, county council president, county council recipient. And want to thank everybody for their hard work, for sure, but definitely a little bit cautious and definitely slow to, you know, pat ourselves on the back for any way. I say that as a Kalamazoo council recipient, living in Kalamazoo, also living in pocket. I think it's great that we have this opportunity, but I also know that money getting thrown at issues doesn't fix it. I say that as a Kalamazoo council recipient, working for nonprofits in Kalamazoo, living in pocket. So the Kalamazoo Promise, as great of a blessing as it was, that recommended that free, didn't give me out of pocket, but in Kalamazoo. And I'm cautious, so I'm cautious about, one, I think it just says a lot about our current state of the world in terms of the nation, the state, being one of the worst communities in Kalamazoo, the fact that we have to have private donors investing in our public education and in our city government, that should say a lot about our current state of affairs. Some issues were brought up around racial disparities. So like, that's one of the first things in terms of investing, this is my, what is this going to do for myself and my family? What is this going to do for my own business in Kalamazoo? What is this going to do for me? And I'm also looking at something around this, like accountability too, because I know there's, and it might not fall on the city commission, like there's failing somewhere, it might be on the state, and I'm also working on, you know, with these lacks of money that have been coming, like what are, where are we as a city going to hold our state accountable? Maybe that's me not being at the paper, but I'm just cautious about, again, that private funding for public government stuff. As the way that I know, I know there's a little bit more screens attached, you know, from my exposure to the way government works, the things that are not right. So I'm like, what's the favor for a favor? That's where my mind is going, like, okay, you ain't just going to give seventy billion, you don't expect nothing. That might, might not come out in a memory of understanding. I'm also clear that, like, in terms of who owns the city of Kalamazoo, in nonprofit, what I call a nonprofit industrial complex, along with grants and all this, and like, our awesome universities, like, who owns Kalamazoo? It is, again, you know, like, I'm just cautious, I'm hopeful for, you know, future, like, great opportunities, but I'm just, I'm, it's something about me, you know what I mean, like, thinking about numbers that I've heard in terms of Kalamazoo having some of the highest concentration of billionaires in the nation, and also, you know, hearing this, like, vote disparity. And I know this is more so about the budget, but I'm like, what's it going to do for me? You know what I mean? The city government, I've heard it too, like, is this going, how is this going to help investors, you know, God, what's it going to do for me? Seriously, that's a serious, like, dead serious question. And that hope we like on this nonprofit disparity as well, too, just like, but I question how much that I call a nonprofit industrial complex, I tend to Kalamazoo, I'm telling you currently, we have so many nonprofits that need to be mobilized and for investment, but like, down the line, like, I feel like a lot of this stuff is a band-aid. Somebody mentioned three years down the line that was. So I'm just, as a citizen, I'm cautious, I know, I'm just not so quick to be like, hey, let's pat ourselves on the back. I definitely agree with what you said, I needed, as far as Bill Johnson, in part, like, that's right, that's very important.
Sir, your time is expired.
They hate on our city already.
Thank you.
For more.
Thank you. Young lady here? Yes, ma'am.
I run up and fuck you. My name is Linda Teeter, I live in the city of Kalamazoo, former city commissioner, was on the Blue River Panel, and what an honor to serve the council. Thank you all for your leadership. There are a couple of things I want to leave you with tonight, as we can move forward with this. Your leadership and the skills we need from you are going to be a bit different than we're doing right now. And now I'm talking to several of you, and having had that experience, that you're constantly thinking about, she had like, how many officers can you cut? Where can you reduce your department, instead of, you have funding now, you want to cut more officers, how can you get back? And how do you round that up, that makes a difference in this community? In nineteen ninety-seven, Vice Mayor Cooley and I ran together, doing, I'm not using poverty, and God love you, but at the end of the day, we were told by the city manager, a hundred thousand dollars. That was the discretionary one, oh, thank you, Lord. How can we reduce poverty for a minute with a hundred thousand dollars? Thank you for standing with us. In nineteen ninety-seven, we came off the biggest, reduced the cost of government over a year, the city of Kalamazoo, they haven't seen, and that's where I started. We never got to, how do we add revenue? We kept on that hope, and took our all now today, like, how do we reduce, how do we make? It's really time to think about investing revenue into this city. Can you imagine sitting at a collaboration table, through county-wide leaders, and not have to beg that two thousand dollars in pilots and the manager to open the city budget, but rather being able to be that player that would make a difference in regionalizing some of our services and thinking collaboratively, instead of, we can't sit back at that table and just, we don't have, we can't lose that money to the term of money. Thank you all for what you're about to embark on. And sometimes there are campaign promises that we all ran on, and we have to do this and that, but there are opportunities that come along, and what a wonderful community we have, and thank you for being there at this time to be our leaders.
Can I go to the young lady in the cream jacket?
Thank you very much, commissioners, thank you for your work. Mayor Hopeboll, city manager, thank you very much. Sherry Welsh, by the way. I'm a resident of the city, for goodness, parents and business owner in downtown Kalamazoo, and I feel like, the day the promise was announced, I don't know, let me feel like that, but I feel like, wow, I can't believe it. I too, like Linda and several others here, was honored to serve on the Blue River Panel, I chaired the panel. So truly, we felt acutely what our commissioners have gone through four years. And the work was difficult and laborious, and just to clear a few questions, folks wondered what would the panel think about this, and what really went on in the panel? I have the report here, and I'd really be glad to share the accurate report of what went on in there, but friends, has turned on that with me? We argued a lot, and we discussed a lot, and it was very difficult work, mostly difficult because there was no silver bullet, there was no magic answer. Did we not many times say, if only somebody could write a check, amen? Did we not? Did we not say that? And we laughed about it, right? Right, Jeff? We laughed about it and said, wouldn't that just be the way to do it? And at the end, it wasn't about cost containment, so it makes difference with those who think that that was a discussion, because we pretty quickly learned that costs were contained and stripped to bare bones about as far as they could go. All we had left was to look at other options, but the options, my friends, were not right. The twenty-eight, twenty-three actions we put out there, none of them really solved the hole, filled the hole, solving the tax. And that was a disappointment for many of us. So in the end, concerned about what citizens would think, what businesses would think, was this really a healthy option? That was not an option we recommended and put forth to the commissioners. It's right here in this body of work. The unfortunate reality is, many of us walked away from that work believing we did not do our jobs, because we could not find a solution, and we did not give them any answers to fill that deficit that we were facing. The obstacles were just too great. And the biggest, what you need to understand is Commissioner Anderson is absolutely right. The biggest obstacle that we found in just about every option that we would want to try was the fact that in Lansing, our laws, our constitution, our legislation will not allow us to do many of the things that we're able to do in other states. Our hands are tied. So it didn't give us a whole lot to look like. So imagine our excitement, I'm sure you speak for most of the folks on the panel here, to come and see that there is another way to do things. Wow, it's a new day. It is absolutely a new day, and I'm really, really excited about that. I think the idea of getting to that fully endowed fund by 2020 is very, very doable, particularly understanding the folks who are involved in this process, and the kind of dollars that we're talking about, I think that's very doable. The thing that excites me also is this, and no one has really talked about this yet, but in three years, we have the opportunity to work with our representatives and our legislators in Lansing to advocate for changes at the state level in the way city government is funded. Because we are not the only city, my friends, in the state of Michigan, facing financial crisis, okay? So, but the problem is, as all of you probably realize, we haven't changed that over the last, right? It takes time. But we have, with this option, several years, to begin to advocate for changes that could lead us to a whole new day. Meanwhile, we immediately fill the gap, refill the hole, and I think that is really exciting. I've heard, I'll just close with this, I've heard several people saying, what happens if we do this, and thus and such, it leads to this, or it leads to that, and we still need to do an income tax down the road? I would just make it with you, land us if you don't.
Your time is up. Young lady in the left.
Okay, I'm Patty Owens, I'm a resident of the city, and I work here and I live here. And I'm hearing fear, I'm hearing curiosity, I'm hearing some mistrust. With this tremendous opportunity comes tremendous responsibility, and that is being put into your hands. And I applaud you for having the courage to even think about doing this. I very much look forward to what comes out in September, and again, I applaud you all for really having the courage to do something so unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentleman in the left?
Thomas Minto, resident. Well, change is scary, and no one likes it, and if they did like it, then we do it all the time, we don't do it all the time. I think probably at the dawn of the Kalamazoo Promise, there was probably a too good to be true kind of a feeling, as much as it sort of feels like here, and I felt like that walking into this room tonight, because I felt like, so I was just going to write a check, they have a lot of influence, but hearing that it's not just one or two people writing a check for the life of this thing, but it's actually a community, giving back to the community. I'm a big believer that if you have the ability to give, that you do when you're able to, then I try to do as best I can. And that is something I could really see getting behind and putting my own money into. So I want to really fight the argument that city is wasting funds. I mean, I don't, I look around and I don't see, like, city staff driving, like, Beamers and Cadillacs and all this kind of stuff. I don't see these, like, lavish buildings, I'm the complete opposite, I see buildings in decline, and, you know, I look at the drapes in City Hall, and it looks like they've been under the fifties, and it's like, things just need to be updated a little bit, you know? So I don't think, I think we're operating right now at the bare minimum, and it doesn't give us any room to grow, it doesn't propel us into the future. And I like both options, where it reduces the overall tax on the property owner. One, because I moved in the city, because I liked the historical houses, and I'm repaying them, give, sort of giving back and leaving something longer than myself. And I, my friends, I tried to convince them to move into the city, and they're like, oh, the taxes are so high, you know, I don't want to move into the city. And I'd love to be able to say, like, nope, they're actually better than the local area, and now we have all this housing stock that you can move into, and you can give something back. I mean, it just, it sounds like such a propelled, I mean, it's just a, I know that it's a three year, like, we hope it'll, it'll fund it, or it'll be long-term, but it's three years to really push this and really change the whole direction of the city. Instead of just cutting, 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 cutting every year, we actually have a chance to change it and move it toward the entire future. That's, I mean, that's a, that's a big job, that's, I wouldn't have that job, but I wish you all the best with it, and I will help any way I can.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to, yes, sir?
Next to the side of the city. I'm kind of shocked, because for years, I've been very vested in this city, and every year, it's a state discussion, what we've done, how we've done, what we've looked out, who's paid, who's responsibilities, how to make all of this juggle around. I consider Kalamazoo to be in this decline of systemic depression for the last ten to fifteen years, and you all gave us a ZOLO. I gotta tell you, we don't know all the details, we don't have all this looked up, all these assets that you keep working on, so we have more details. Well, for Pete's sake, yes. And thank you for the ZOLO. I don't believe it was there, and you pulled it out of thin air. So thank you, and keep moving it forward.
Anyone else wanting to draft a commission?
Strickland, and I am a resident of the city. I just want to acknowledge tonight that, you know, there's been quite a bit of criticism given to the commission, as well as the city manager and mayor. And I want to acknowledge that I believe that we do have a breakthrough, believe. I believe that you are intelligent enough and skillful enough to get it done, and if you're not, shame on us. But I want to acknowledge that, you know, what has happened in our communities when we're not optimistic enough to receive the gift? When we got to a place where so many things have went on in our world, and this is something that I want to reflect about, that we don't believe that something can be truly, in a place where we have the greatest promises in the nation, we don't believe that that can be duplicated in another fashion to help our, our city function, you know? I mean, when we look at the fruits of the individuals who have shared the dollars, when we look at all of the influence that they already have, my, the reason why I'm not scared is because you can't sell a person something they already have. You can't sell influence to a person who's already super influential. So when I look at the generosity, when I look at the investing, it is something that inspires us to feel a little bit different in a commissioning, not just feel legalistic, or not just focus on the things that come from normal, normal municipal settings, but to be hopeful, you know? And I'll say that change is not scary for me personally. When I look at some of the conditions of individuals in our city, and I see the reality of what some- of what some of us have only seen on paper, when damn Commissioner Goody's talking about those statistics, when I see the reality of what people were trying to make the promise, a meaningful promise to individuals who fall beneath that poverty line, change is not scary to me. Change is received with a pleasant and optimistic perspective, and, and I want to applaud the committee. I feel like you're not, I come at you. So I want to be one of those people that's saying, thank you for having this conversation with us in the role. You know, thank you for not having this conversation and going ahead on and working on this journey without us, and then asking us to receive it at the end. I think that we should all appreciate being a part of this journey, and all be able to celebrate that even though we have challenges, we're moving in a progressive and a positive direction.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Nick. The White House, when you're coming to the city of residence, I want to also say thank you to the mayor, to the commissioners, and the manager for your creativity. And I would, I would like to say all the things you said in terms of the greatness of which this will really prove to be. And I want to also challenge you to be as creative and be an uplifting opportunity that you thought was good today. So I think oftentimes, dollars go to the same people. So we're talking about, you know, with the contracts that the city gives to minorities, things to that, and so this money is dispersed, I will be there to help you as well as hold you accountable for who gets those dollars. And I will be loud and clear. So I want to let you know that I believe that you can do it, although you, I was part of the team. So I believe you can do it. But I also want to say that we will hold you accountable for it. Again, we're talking about minority businesses, we're talking about bringing people out of poverty, number one thing that creates generational wealth is small businesses, and the number one thing that keeps people from starting small businesses is funding. So now that we have it, let's use it responsibly. And again, I am a part of that initiative, I'm not running my mouth, I'm saying that I am posting and running something to help you now. And I want to be a part of the conversation, I can be a part of the conversation and hold you accountable for it. But I wanted to offer to say thank you, but minorities, those are in poverty, we're talking about homeownership, so ways in which more people can own homes, because we know, especially for low income, that is number one way. And when people can create wealth themselves, second, it's these small businesses. So I know currently, we have a city fund that is pretty ridiculous, so I would like to see that expanding. And also in terms of the contracts that minorities receive from the city, county, is also ridiculous, and I'm also hoping and working to make sure that more minorities are prepared for those contracts, but I'm also going to hold you guys accountable to make sure those are available for us. And I think there should be some type of stipulation where a certain amount of minorities should be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Chris Buck, resident of the city of Calum's Zoo. This sounds really great. I'm sure a lot of you have expected time and discussion behind orders about this. And so I also want to thank you for your efforts in bringing this to the table. But I also want to caution you with the not opportunity to be presented to you when all the strings attached may not be as visible as you would hope. And I'm very cautious, me myself, gentlemen, extremely cautious when I'm being presented with an opportunity and hearing people in the audience cheering me on more than to support this initiative, more than to listen and question for more detailed transparency. And so transparency for me is a huge issue. How are we going to evaluate what we do with these dollars? How are we going to evaluate, evaluate the investment to make sure that it yields a return? How are we going to make sure that we turn a dollar for $2, $3.50 and not continue to keep losing dollars in the city, which is a huge issue we have? So we have an opportunity here. Great, let's make sure that we are accountable, transparent, and authentic with engagement. I keep pressing you guys in the city commission, I've left you alone because you choose to be more intentional than authentic. But my sincerity is to see a more democratic America, a more democratic Calum's Zoo, because I didn't come to this country to see the same type of things that I see all around the world in the same way, that's implementing that same philosophy also. So for me, my sincerity is to make sure that people improve their quality of life. And if we're not doing that, what are we doing? And I really hear a lot of rhetoric about philanthropy, okay, and the non-profit industrial conflict. Let's make sure that if they're getting something out of it, we're getting something out of it too, all right? I don't want to see one-handed, one-sided, overly deals. We have to make sure that we are developing a sense of ownership and destroying this welfare mentality in this, in this country. This welfare mentality is what God sees as, right? We have an issue, we're asking for something, and we don't work hard to see this country, and that is clearly our drive, our motivation to excel. So let's be responsible, right? You see a lot of missionaries go to countries and create turmoil and good intentions by giving them things that they, themselves, work for. Let's make sure that we don't do the same thing, a lot of the same thing that happened here, okay? Because we have a lot of people here, and I love the people of Calum's Zoo, with this welfare mentality, it's a killing the drive that actually makes a working economy. Let's make sure we're not killing that drive and not commercializing, let's make sure we're investing in, in non-commercial small businesses, let's make sure we're putting people in these empty houses. Let's get these houses back on the tax hold, these city-owned properties. Because this, this, if we're basing most of our tax base on our properties, and there may have over 400 city-owned properties that are not on the tax hold, then there's our issue. So let's make sure we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. Let's make sure that we're partnering, partnering this initiative with the work that Rebecca King is doing with the Calum's Zoo, Imagine Calum's Zoo, and that there is a platform for evaluation, impact evaluation. We have to make sure that our investment is yielding a return. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, please.
I'm Washington Junior, and I live directly in the city of Calum's Zoo. I'd be remiss if I didn't give a couple of details. 10 years ago, the Council's Promise was announced at a school board meeting, that non-stoners were going to pay tuition fees for all students that graduate from Calum's Public Schools. To receive the Calum's Promise, all you must do, live within the boundaries of the Calum's Public Schools, have attended this four years in the Calum's Public Schools, and receive a Calum's Public School diploma. If you do that, you will receive funds. And at that time, any state public school, college, or university, now there are 15 private schools that are associated with that. We sit here today, $80 million later, it's in perpetuity, it's promised forever. I work for these people, I do not know who these people are, I never sat in a room with these people, do I trust them? Well, yeah, I sure do. I sure do. So there are times when you must step out, and you must decide that someone does have the right thing in mind. And in this particular case, I'm here to say that they do. And I don't know that there's anyone in here that is skeptical, and nor should you be skeptical, that a philanthropy like this is taking place. The greatest gift ever given to a community, plopped down in the middle of a park, if you will, to see what this looks like, this experiment, if you will, that's promised forever, was given to us here in Calum's Zoo. You won't go anywhere else and find anything like it. 60 communities across the country were aware of, have started something similar to the Calum's Promise, none have the generosity behind it, all have to fundraise each and every day, and wonder if they're going to be able to provide it. Each one of them worries that they may have to at some point call every single student that is on a scholarship and say, this is the last semester. We don't have that. It's time for Calum's Zoo to leverage the Calum's Promise. By leverage, we need to take hold and take a look exactly what we have, and never look back and say, we blew this opportunity. We need to leverage it to make sure that the investment in human capital, the only investment this country has in human capital is education. We need to make sure that we're taking that. There needs to be something to see here when people come here. Right now, if they come from another community, say, hey, you want to see the promise of what it's doing? There's not much to see here yet. Yes, there are graduates. It's mentioned that there are graduates, and still, yet, there are other barriers for those graduates to make it and be as successful as they want to be. And make sure that they stay there, Calum's Promise lifted them out of poverty, lifted them to the next level. It's time for us to do that. It appears as if there's an opportunity to do so. I sat on the Blue Ribbon, we wrestled with all of this stuff. It was mentioned that if someone had this idea at that time, I think we met, what, eight times, and we're supposed to meet four or something like that, I don't know, but we kept on meeting, kept on meeting, because it was important. But I tell you what, we kind of met two or three. I think it's pretty important to understand the courage and the leadership to step out. Let's be a model for our nation. We already are. They look to us as a leader in education and support for our young people. Let's make something to see here with opportunities that are given to us. When the Calum's Promise was announced, they didn't know how they were going to give it out. It was announced in November, they didn't even have an organization or a person to write anything to give it out. They stepped out on courage and made the announcement and did it. I'm not suggesting that this is that simple, but I am suggesting that sometimes you make a move, and then that move can be beneficial. $80 million, as of today, it will be $100 million in 2017. Let's make that.
Is there anyone else wanting to address the commission this evening on the side? Thank you. Commissioners, we are, we have a motion on the floor. Do you have any further comments? As we always have an opportunity for comments before, I know we sort of twisted it up, but I won't give back. Issue mills are.
I guess I just wanted to comment that after this vote, I hope we can still just have a brief discussion on the other option we had to come up tonight, just to make sure that any direction we have was that is clear with city staff. Because we're giving a direction on one option, and I just want to make sure city staff is not confused as to whether there's any direction.
I don't know. I was hoping.
I'm not saying we stay here all night.
Forget who you folks are. Any other comments from commissioners before the roll call? So I've been somewhat quiet, at least not verbose in my comments, or maybe I think I was, I don't know. This, theater is trepidation, understood. And I think that Mr. Washington summed it up for me the best, in that it was a leap of faith. And faith is not always easy for, for most of us, I would think. And that leap of faith is the position we've been placed in. To never said that we brought a concept before you, that's what we brought. Knowing that the details and the terms and the opportunity and the specifics, if you expected that tonight, that was not our intent. It was our intent to show you a leap of faith. But it's always been our intent, as we enter these conversations, to bring back the work, to do the work that determines and demonstrates and identifies the true opportunity beyond what you know in the general. And if you think about it, our staff always does that work. We get things presented to us as an idea, thought, a concept, small group meetings and the larger meetings. This is no different than, than the work we do all the time. And let me tell you, I would love for every bit of the work that we do to be done in the public eye. Wouldn't that be interesting? I would love, if we want true democracy, to have this group not be here on every other Monday. We have a public vote on everything. But you've elected representatives, this is a representative democracy. You've asked people to lead and to find a path and work to improve our community, that we've all committed to in an election that allows us to sit on these tables. We talk about input, we have, we started off this with our Imagine Calum's Zoo process that's going to go on for a few months, and has six or seven or eight more months, and identify the person you can see tonight, she, well, could have seen tonight, she's not here at the moment, to put your input in now, give further input. I appreciate the accountability and the challenge I hear, but I'm going to challenge you back. It's Imagine Calum's Zoo that's going to drive this work, and that's your imagination, not mine. I, I'm on the steering committee, but I'm giving a few, a few ideas because my mouth runs too much. This is, this process is your opportunity to move our city, your opportunity to guide our destiny, your opportunity to say, this is what I want. You can come to these meetings and tell us all that, but I tell you, for years, we've heard it, and heard it, and heard it, and there's only so much we can do from, from what we hear at the podium, because not everything is in, within our ability or power, or within our resources. And let me tell you, this man here, he's been here three years, came to us with no huge ego, coming into a community that he knew that was struggling, that he knew that we had challenges, and said, I'm going to dive in. We got to solve this thing. In his interview, he said, we got to solve this thing. He mentioned an income tax, people went nuts. And he still got the job, because he's the right man for the job. The work that he did to go about even bringing this up, challenged him and his staff to think differently than they ever had before, and these people sitting around here in the back and over here are working this city every day. And then we get someone walks in this room and, and questions him on how he should design his leadership team, and saying that he's spending too much money on, I'm sorry, I'm going off for a second, he's spending too much money on leaders that are doing incredible work. He's demonstrated, they've demonstrated their value, done, doing incredible work, and don't have all the facts that, hm, he cut other costs to be able to have those three. Other costs, we really needed that other person that, or two, or one and a half people that he, he cut. But no, we throw out some, something in front of everybody, and we act as if it's fact, or we walk in and say, well, the citizens want, I heard it, and I always love that when I hear it. And I'm not, you know, the person, but someone said that, and I'm going, okay, so I want to make sure that, we know we got a whole bunch of citizens in here, that you have given responsibility for seven people to try to be your voice. And what we're hearing is your individual voices that may connect to a collective, but aren't necessarily the whole collective. We have to do our best to figure out what to do for the whole collective. We do. This is a concept, this is an idea, based on the legacy and history of people willing and capable of having a civic theater exist in our community, a Calum's Zoo Institute of Arts, a Radisson that was falling apart, that the Upjohn Company said, woo, we're done with, and somebody came and said, yeah, we're going to make this one of the best hotels in southwest Michigan, and hadn't made a whole bunch of money going. Trail systems that we now have going through our, our, our community. And a promise to anyone and everyone that lives in our city, that has children that they want to raise, that go to our school district, they get a promise from somebody that just decided, this is a great place. Well, I would submit to you that we have the opportunity to continue to support the promise, create this great place, with all the details that we need, and all the assurances that these seven people will guide our destiny. When someone says kicking down, go roll down the can, I disagree with the commissioner. I do. I do. This is an opportunity. This is an opportunity that is unlike any we've ever, ever had, unlike any we've ever had. This is the day to lead, and when someone says we're not leading our own destiny, are you kidding me? I think you can see that this is leading your own destiny. Doesn't mean it's the right thing to do, the thing we're going to do, four people get to determine that tonight, if we're going to move forward to exploring this and moving this forward, four people, because we're governed by the power of four. This is true leadership, this discussion, your comments, your, all the energy you've put into this, trying to figure out a path forward for this community. And even if you don't have that path, or if you take a different path, you still have to make a decision, that's leadership. To me, don't have to agree, but I believe that's what it is. I am so excited about it. I am so excited that we got to speak about all the options that we have, all the options, and bring a new option to the table that, if you hear on Facebook, we have no great idea, we have no new idea, and then the people that say we have no new idea, then pass us with a new idea. I'm just confused. I'm just confused. I'm just so confused. We have individuals that say they don't want taxes. Well, we have an opportunity, but don't explore that. I'm sorry. I'm excited. Opportunity is here. I'm ready to get to work. Everyone, please call over.
Commissioner Millsar.
Yes.
Commissioner Millsar.
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Mayor Coon.
Yes.
Mayor Hopwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners and Lords. Commissioner Millsar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to go back to the, the other option we've been exploring tonight. I'm not looking to make any sort of lotion or anything. I just wanted to sort of acknowledge that, you know, we've, we've moved forward on exploring this option further. I, I don't want us to necessarily consider that as a reversal of past decisions to look at the income tax because we may find the, you know, doubles in the details, we might find the double. I'm not saying we are. I mean, but I'm saying, if we're going to use that term, that means we could find something that we can't get past. So I don't want us to close the, you know, prematurely close the door on our other option that still gives us the ability to vision and be sustainable and everything else. And I believe, oh, the other thing I wanted to address was if we're still planning to put the income tax calculator online. You know, I strongly encourage that, very dynamic, you know, ten bills, exemption levels. I mean, the highest I believe is three thousand. And I'd love to see, you know, speaking in the theoretical, I imagine if Calm Zoo were to have an income tax, it would be the most progressive in the state as far as its impact on low-income people. So I'd like our calculator, you know, to have that theoretical, you know, most, you know, you know, considered of low-income folks as possible. And also the beauty of, of that is the way the law is structured, what helps low-income people also makes everyone. It pretty much has to be fair, exemptions. That was all I had on the income tax.
So I heard that one specific piece of work. And I was surprised that the calculator wasn't already up. Because I thought we were going to have it by the end of this month.
It is developed, we haven't posted it online and that's what we'll be doing next week.
Commissioner.
Oh, we, we, we should comment some.
No, because we haven't had citizens' comments.
We're sky-laying another crack, Captain. We're in session time. Okay. Oh, I, I have them.
Commissioner Millsar, do you have anything on this stuff?
No.
We're now at Citizens' Comments on Anything this Evening? Anything this Evening?
Just thank you.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we are now at Commissioners' Comments. Commissioner Urban, you're there, so go ahead. I'm not going to wait for him.
I'll be. Well, I, I would just add to what Commissioner Millsar was just saying. A reason to, to keep the cooking a little bit on the income tax option is at some point it might be needed and to know what we're up against, if, what, what that would look like. It would be good to have that fleshed out so that if it turns out that we pursue what I was suggesting, we have the package ready to go and, and well, I don't even believe, or I think I'm unclear about what else happened. So I'll just support it, Commissioner Millsar. That's all.
That's right, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I just want to thank those of us who are still here for coming on. As always, public input is greatly appreciated. You know, I, I, I feel negligent, you know, negligent in my duties if I didn't address sort of something that, that came to me from Mr. Strickland's comment of, you know, what happens if we're not optimistic enough? And, you know, there, we've heard from citizens and some for myself, you know, trepidation of where this could be. And, and I definitely don't think we should be crippled by fear. But, but it is important to acknowledge that, that money is very powerful. You know, I've spent many years in this, in this community now, engaged with a variety of nonprofits and agencies. I know many friends and colleagues. And the reality is, you know, as it is everywhere, corruption does exist. I'm not calling city, I'm not saying city corrupt, I'm not saying any one organization, but corruption does exist. People pat people's backs, people award contracts to their buddies, people make insinuations of progress. It is out there. So, you know, it's, it's always said, you know, with, I don't know the exact term, but, you know, with great money or great whatever comes great responsibility. And that's really going to be the, the, probably the heaviest lifting, in my opinion. Certainly in my support and feeling that this, that our citizens and our city is protected is how can we craft this in a way that, to the greatest extent possible, make sure there's not money in influence outside of the, the general process of government? Because it is fundamentally different than the, than the promise, in the sense that promise is funding private individuals. And, you know, that's, that's amazing and a lot more simple than funding government. Because government is prone to skepticism and, and you have to have a lot more transparency to do it. So, you know, in many ways, we have a much greater task than what the promise base to ensure that you have transparency and full autonomy and, and full accountability. Because, you know, if, if I can't find that, I can't, you know, I can't support something knowing that, you know, this, this, the fears I'm hearing could be a reality. And as I said, I don't want fears to cripple us, but I also don't, you know what? I want to make sure we address fears and not just rhetorically, but, you know, substantially to the greatest extent possible, knowing that nothing can ever be perfect in our country. And.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Millsar.
To be brief, because I want to go home and watch the next president speak. You know, I, I wanted to say thank you to city manager and, and Mr. Mayor. I mean, you put Calm Zoo back on the map, you know, with this promised lake opportunity. And in our small groups, as we've been working on this, you've heard my concerns and my feedback. I just want to kind of echo something that Sherry, who's in the lower here, said a little bit ago, that you've heard me say before, which is, we are fortunate that we have this kind of generosity in our community. And not, there's not another community in Michigan that does that. And so we, as we move forward and do our due diligence and work on this MOU, we need to not let the state of Michigan and our legislatures off the hook. We need to continue to hold them accountable because the cuts in revenue sharing and the policies that were recently enacted crippling us to do, you know, anything short of a promised lake opportunity is unfair. And our, you know, neighbors around us and municipalities all throughout the state of Michigan don't have this opportunity. So we need to continue to hold lands accountable and all of this.
Yeah, so. So this group knows, you all probably don't know. I, I want to be really transparent in saying that, you know, from the time that we started talking about this in the beginning of the year, I've been incredibly skeptical and I have been incredibly fearful of, of this idea. And, and I think that, you know, city manager, it's what hit the nail on the head for me. And it was mentioned a couple of times before, trust is a big issue here. And so in order to move forward with something like this, it takes a great deal of trust. I am going to say that, you know, I am typically the eternal optimist. So it is so hard for me to sit in this room and not be that with this issue. So I guess, you know, I, I fully support exploring the details, putting those details on paper and then writing. And for me, it has to really have no contingencies, right? It has to really have no strings attached. Because otherwise, then we're not doing our duty by the citizens of the city. And so, you know, that's, that's something that I'm going to be looking for very intentionally. Another thing that I'm going to say, I'm going to challenge all of us to do this, you know, the promise has been brought up. It's also been brought up on the dais as, as something to consider as we make decisions. We have privately talked about, you know, how this person or this person would feel about a decision we make because of how much they've invested. We've got to stop that, especially, especially if we're going down this road. Especially if we're going down this road. So we, we can't, you know, can't have situations where folks who invest large sums of money, you know, get, get special consideration. Are you shaking your head? No, Commissioner Anderson, but, you know, I'm sure it was mentioned on the dais before. And so, and so that's an issue for me that I'm going to challenge us to walk back on. And then I'm going to say, you know, it's been talking, you know, Commissioner, Matt, you mentioned the state and some of the changes that have been made at the state level to really tie our hands here in the city. And, you know, one of our, one of our great philanthropists is deeply connected to the legislatures, or the legislators that have made up those decisions through a, through a PAC that endorses and financially supports those legislators. So I also would love to see some commitment to using that influence to walk back some of these really, really harmful policies. You know, these are individuals who brought us, you know, the emergency manager of Law and Culture in Michigan, and Detroit Public Schools. And so, you know, there are a lot of connections here that I think that in an ideal world, if this unfolds the way it should, we can capitalize on, right? And so, you know, I would ask that in addition to making such a huge commitment to the city, that they also make that commitment at the state level, using the great amount of influence that they have. And, and I fully support Commissioner Millsar in, in wanting to continue to explore the income tax and the off chance that we don't get an agreement, right? Because nothing is guaranteed. And we would be really irresponsible if we didn't do that. So I'm going, I'm going to ask for, you know, patience from our constituents, from citizens, to allow us to explore both of those options because we don't know what happens down the road. And, you know, if we get this plan and we get this money and it is truly no strings attached and there are truly no contingencies and we can absolutely move forward in a way that honors all our citizens, not all in. But we have got to be very, very, very careful and intentional every step of the way to make sure that what was presented tonight is actually what we pursue.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but unfortunately I've been put in that position, so I'm going to. So first of all, I have a great deal of respect for my colleague, and you know that, Commissioner Sykes. But I, I want to make this completely unequivocal, that I have never been in a two-person meeting or a large meeting where I have participated in any way, in any discussion about any vote relative to how somebody who was a donor was going to think about it. Absolutely, one hundred percent deny that. One hundred percent. So that said, I also want to talk about the current administration and, you know, lobbying there. Granted, great thing, and I believe that that is a hundred percent important thing to do over the next three years. But I also want to go back and say through administrations of all stripes, since the sixties in this state, there has been a complicit, you know, participation with the limitation, you know, when you were talking about the governor now or the governor before of different parties who helped put us in this position that we're in. So unfortunately, this has been through all kinds of administrations of, of all kinds of stripes. And I don't disagree that it's been a very, very bad idea. And I also am not certain what has driven that thinking over many of these years. But I do think that outside of changing everybody's minds, which, you know, for goodness sakes, I'm a hundred percent into that, we have an opportunity to change the trajectory of the results of those decisions here at Calm Zoo. And I'm going to be just a hundred percent in support of that idea, not for me. I mean, I could live with a low income tax, no big deal, okay. But I know people who might have to pay an extra hundred bucks a year for something, and that's a big deal. And so I'm going to be a hundred percent supportive of this because of the people who live in the city of Calm Zoo, who every day have to struggle to make ends meet and a lot of times don't. And that is a problem, not only in Calm Zoo, we all, all know that. But we have an opportunity to do something transformational here. And I honestly believe that if that occurs, that's not just going to be about Calm Zoo. That's going to be a story that's going to have ramifications, they're going to spread out like ripples. And I think important statements are going to be made. And one of those very important statements is, it is the responsibility of citizens in this country to participate in a way that helps everybody have a humane quality of life. And we're seeing a demonstration of that. And for goodness sakes, let's do a good job making sure that happens.
Commissioner Vice Mayor.
So the only way this works is if these people put their money in the middle of the table and then take their hands. And that's my understanding and my complete belief, and that's what I believe the track record is of these people. And, and that's what makes me think that this is a wonderful night for the city of Calm Zoo. And I want to thank those people who care so much about this city that they want to make it a model for the country. And it is a wonderful opportunity, but it's also a great challenge. And when I think about that, I think about what Ted Kennedy said about his brother about. Some men see things as they are and they say, why? He saw things that never were and said, why not? We have the opportunity to think things that never were, to dream, and make them a reality in the city. And I think it's a great night for the city of Calm Zoo.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to just make a quick comment, or a couple of comments, I guess. One, I agree with caution. Get to negotiate deals and try to figure out how we get to where we are all at to make something great happen. And I don't plan for there to be any ties at all. Because when you say that, because I was the one in the room really pushing certain things and what have you in regards to governance is governance and it has to be separate. If, if you think that I'm going to, if you're saying that, that, well, I'm not saying, if you think that I'm going to allow someone to take our job that they have, that's a done deal. If it gets close to that, we're done, I'm walking out of the room. It's that simple. This work isn't done, this is a great opportunity, but there's a whole freaking amount of work that has to go into this. A whole lot of work, that's why that three-year period is, is giving us time to figure out the longitudinal nature of how we help make this thing happen. There's not going to be one donors, these, these folks may write and report that, oh, this donor's doing this. Well, let me help you. The, the, the work is for those folks to help us build this base, build our foundation. And then we get to do that. And I said to somebody, I don't know, it might have been pastor, I don't know, but I envision we have a wishing well in the, in the middle of City Hall atrium that young people, because we are the home of the promise, can come in and put a quarter in because they want to be philanthropists and, and, and add to our city's opportunity. My little quarter, twenty-five years later, may have turned into three hundred dollars or something. And that's my gift, that that's all I can do. Not requiring, but it's an opportunity. That's, that's the realm of the possible that we're in. This is a, I'm just, well, I'm freaking because I'm tired. It's going to take a lot, a lot of work. But I think we are, we are about the business of, of doing the business of this city. And all of your hearts are in the same place. All of your minds are in the same place. We face the challenges, we will continue to do that. And I think we will come out at the end of the day, a better place, a better city, one of the most impressive places in this country. With that, we are jumping.